Okay, we're going to start our study session tonight. This is the June 20th, 2015, actually City Council Committee of the Whole. We are ready to go. First on our agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three minutes limit per person or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you had wanted to show a video or PowerPoint, that would have been, should have been submitted by 5:00 PM today to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson. So, do we have anyone for a public comment tonight? Please give your name and address.
Thank you. I did sign up. I am Larry Crandall. I live here in Sumamish at 4335 Issaquah Pine Lake Road Southeast, Unit 1406. And I was here to talk on another subject, but I happened to come in and notice that there's, the artwork is out and displays one of your topics tonight, Trees in the Woods, or something like that. So, that was interesting. But what I'm here tonight to thank everybody that, the city and everybody else that's connected with the Shakespeare in the Park. I was able to attend last Saturdays, and it was just wonderful. So, Wood and Oak was on a real good show, real good. It's always interesting to attend and find out how they modern, monitorize, or make modern the Shakespearean plays. And one of the things they did, which probably took some stretching, was to have Lou Reed's some lyrics from Walk on the Wild Side put in there, and their Globe Theater is probably spinning from that. But Fallstaff was, of course, a big part of Henry IV, Part One, and they made a lot of comments about his girth and his portliness, and it reminded me that there is an old proverb that says, "A man without a stomach is like a building without a balcony." So, with that, it's this Saturday, it's as you like it. Thank you.
Thank you. I might point out that some of us were there as well, so, at least a couple of us, I think. In any case, Stephanie Sullivan.
Stephanie Sullivan, 927-232nd Place, Mont East, Sumamish. I would like to comment on the Dothee Hill land use study. I understand that this area has been on the city's radar since at least 2007. I'm not specifically for or against annexing-
I'm sorry, could you speak into the speaker? I didn't hear what you first said.
Okay. Is this better?
Yeah.
I would like to comment on the Dothee Hill land use study. I understand that this area has been on the city's radar since at least 2007. I'm not specifically for or against annexing and ultimately developing Dothee Hill, but what bothers me is that we spent $10,600 to complete a land use study that doesn't seem to tell us anything we didn't already know. As I understand it, the motivation for this is jurisdiction over Dothee Hill Road, but to me, it seems that the ultimate goal of the city is instead annexation itself. If roadway maintenance is the true motivation for this study, why are there no options presented to solve that issue? Given existing policy, we know that annexation is explicitly disallowed. I understand that this section of Dothee Hill Road is under King County jurisdiction and is expected to exceed capacity by 2035, but I don't see annexing the area as the best solution. I feel like there must be options outside of annexation that would give us the ability to maintain that roadway and improve it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tyler Terico.
My name is Tyler Terico, and I'm an incoming freshman at Eastlake High School. I've lived here in Sumamish my whole life, and I'm concerned about our environment and our future as Sumamish. I believe that the amount of clearcutting for new housing developments is damaging our quality of life in our city. We've cleared so many lots of trees in the last couple of months that so many parts of Sumamish that were green are now filled with multiple houses that are practically on top of each other. I know that many people are concerned about this and are against taking out so many trees at once. And I am aware of that we can't stop taking out the trees because we need to grow our city, but I know that we can limit this. This can also relate to global warming, and this affects our entire planet. Trees take in carbon dioxide, and if we cut them down, more carbon dioxide is left in the air, which has been known to raise temperatures in many places, which, that can result in less rainfall, a browner city, and more health problems like skin cancer and immunosuppression. But the worst problem of all that is that cutting down a tree can take 15 to 30 minutes, while regrowing can take multiple decades. And as I've said before, I know that we can't stop the city growth, but I believe that we should create more green belts and protect more of our existing trees that are still here. We should preserve our amazing quality of life. Without that, why would we want to live here? It would just seem like another city. I was talking to my grandparents recently, who live in Sumamish, and they both agree. My grandma has told me many times that trees are very, trees are beautiful and that they serve an environmental purpose. And she's told me that when people are building houses, the certain amount of trees that are cut down, only a fraction of those have to be replanted, which, that seems like a problem to me. And if this continues, then I feel like that Sumamish will no longer be able to hold the title of being very green. And I feel like that, I don't really want Sumamish, and a lot of other people agree with me, that they don't want Sumamish to turn into Seattle or Ballard because they have no trees and they have a higher density population. And I know many people, once again, that think that Sumamish should stay to a medium to low density and, more importantly, stay green. And I suggest that we make more green belts or change the zoning laws to prevent so much clearcutting and preserve the trees. I hope you all consider what I said, and thank you for your time, and have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? Anyone else for a public comment? Well, okay, we'll close public comment and we'll go on to trees. First issue tonight is the Planning Commission recommendation tree regulations. Mr. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have-
I should say Acting City-
Thank you. Motive. We have a presentation from the Community Development Department. We have our Community Development Director, Mike, or excuse me, Jeff Thomas, I'm sorry, and Mike Sugg. Our, what is your title now? I've tried to remember-
Management Analyst.
Management Analyst, thank you very much. He's had a promotion. He's done such a good job for us. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to you two. Thank you.
If it was up to our Acting City Manager, he'd have another promotion, so, you're doing well. Thank you. Good evening, council. Good evening, folks in attendance and watching on TV, and Mr. Acting City Manager, Jeff Thomas with the Community Development Department. This evening, we have our Vice Chair Frank Blough from the Planning Commission here, and he'll be taking to the podium here in short order to help me deliver the Planning Commission's recommendations on tree regulations, an intensive project that the Commission worked on for the better part of three and a half months earlier this year. They just wrapped up in June. Before we get to that, what I would like to do is provide a little context and background refresher for the council for the most part, but also for the folks here watching and watching at home this evening on how the Planning Commission got to the point of working on new tree regulations. So, we've got some key dates here. You'll recall, October 14th last year, council passed interim regulations through an emergency ordinance to establish tree regulations, a little bit different than what our code had provided for in a number of years leading up to last fall. The Commission went through its process. They were still doing some work on the planning, on the comprehensive plan update. They revisited policy as part of their update recommendations to you on trees. You'll also recall we had to extend the emergency ordinance for another six months in the spring of this year, and the Commission wrapped up their work in June, which brings us to tonight, a public hearing, or excuse me, a study session this evening. Tomorrow, you'll have a public hearing and the first reading of a draft ordinance for tree regulations. Our presentation for tonight is in three basic parts. What I'm going to cover briefly in the first two sections are background information regarding the interim tree regulations, as well as the policy work of both the Planning Commission and then as well as more recently, the City Council related to trees. And then Frank will join me in presenting the third section, which is actually an overview of the new draft tree regulations that are in your packet for both tonight and tomorrow night. With that, we're going to jump right in and a quick refresher course on the interim tree regulations. You'll recall, going back to last October and again in April of this year, one of the major components that changed between our old regulations and the interim regulations was raising the required retention percentage of significant trees for new subdivisions and short plots of three or more lots from 25% to 35%. Short plots of two lots was retained at the retention requirement of 25%, which was the key number in the former regulations for all new short plots and subdivisions. Another key change in the interim regulations was the City Council removed the 50% credit for being able to count trees towards the base retention requirement in both critical areas and critical area buffers. So, that was eliminated completely in the interim regulations, and it had previously existed in the former regulations. An example of that, just real quick, if a new subdivision was required to retain 50 significant trees on site, under the old former regulations, 25 of those could have counted in a critical area or critical area buffer, areas of which are required to have those trees retained anyway. So, that's what we mean when we talk about a credit towards retention. Another item that was eliminated in the interim regulations were a couple of incentives that, with staff research going back a number of years, were incentives that had been rarely used, and rarely, I think we were able to find three examples over the course of eight or nine years where they were actually used. Incentives related to reduction in onsite recreation space, as well as increase in that density if you went above the base of the old 25% retention, up to a 30 or 35% retention. Okay, and then finally, the interim regulations also added a new requirement, and it's for replanting. The requirement that was added was a one-to-one replanting for every significant tree lawfully removed from a site. So, going back to my simple example I just gave a moment ago, if a new subdivision had 100 trees and they were removing 65 of them, which would have been meaning your 35% retention percentage, under this requirement, 65 new trees would have to be replanted for the removal of those significant trees. Another small change that also occurred in the interim regulations was just adjusting the size of the deciduous tree requirement from an inch and a half caliper to two and a half inch caliper. With that, then, council passed your interim regulations last October, and you directed staff in the Planning Commission to begin work on new tree regulations during the interim period, the original six-month window. As I mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission was right in the middle of consideration of going through element by element, just as you've been doing in recent weeks and months, of the comprehensive plan and four recommendations for their update to you for the comprehensive plan. The Commission wanted to go back first before starting to talk about new regulations and code, and really just go back and revisit what had they considered in the comprehensive plan update to that point from a policy perspective related to trees. So, through the end of 2014, the Commission went back and did that, and actually, with the direction of City Council of different items that you were looking for in new tree regulations, the Planning Commission made some additional policy recommendations that they added and considered through January into February of this year that were forwarded to the City Council as part of the overall recommendation package on the comp plan. And we're going to move through these quick. These have actually been renumbered and are reflected exactly as they exist now in your most recent version of the comprehensive plan and the track changes that you reviewed just here in the last week or so at your last work session for the comp plan. So, you'll note, we've got a couple policies related specifically to preservation. We've got EC 10.4 relates to existing lots of record and managing tree retention and tree removal on those lots. We've got off-site options for replanting and restoration where it may not be possible on-site. Policy EC 10.6, that's in the current draft of the comp plan, was a direction that was clearly heard from council increasing penalties for unlawful tree removal or damage of trees. Policy EC 10.8, the incentivization of trees on existing lots, especially when we're talking about clustering or forming continuous canopy on or off-site. And, of course, then also looking at additional regulatory tools in the future that would allow for that case-by-case context-sensitive situations that come up when we get into looking at properties for development or redevelopment. That's a context-sensitive nature, something the council's talked about quite a bit in recent work sessions related to comp plan policy. Couple here at the end, the Planning Commission talked quite a bit about the development of an urban forestry management plan, and they recommended that that effort be complete by 2016. And also, this was, EC 1011 was a policy the council just talked about last Tuesday, actually, moving it from the land use chapter over to the environment chapter, developing incentives for retention of higher-value type trees, heritage and/or landmark trees.
So, Jeff, is that in your work plan for the end of the year, Urban Forestry Management Plan?
Well, we're still waiting to see if it's a policy that's ultimately adopted by the City Council as part of the comprehensive plan, but certainly if it is included in the comprehensive plan, the department will be working with the City Manager and Deputy City Manager as we develop our work program for 2016 to scope that and provide some cost estimates for what that will take in terms of time and resource. Yeah?
So, by 2016 means by the end of 2016, not by the beginning, huh?
That is my understanding. That's correct. Yes.
Good catch.
Yeah, by the end, so, that was, that was, yeah, and that was actually, that was the conversation that took place with the Planning Commission, was the end of 2016.
So, perhaps in 2016 would be better than by 2016.
Correct.
Or by the end of-
Correct. By the end of- Or by the end of, yeah.
Language.
Okay, so then, with that, part three of the presentation here, I'd like to ask Frank to, I think he's going to step up to the podium, and I think we've got six or seven slides here that provide a high-level summary of the draft ordinance that's in your packet for this week. What I'm going to do is I'm going to cover each slide as they come up, just the technical points of the slide, and then I believe Frank's going to then provide some insight into the thinking of the Planning Commission as these different aspects of the code were considered, and what the Planning Commission discussed, and how they got to what's in the code. Okay, so, there are a couple of definitions that were added in Chapter 2115, our definition section. Specifically, there was a new definition added for landmark tree, and there was also a definition added for what is a certified arborist. The draft code establishes a purpose section for why these tree regulations have come to be and what they're intended to accomplish. An important element that was also added was the authority to require, for the city to require a professional evaluation of a submittal that would come in, and also to set forth an approval requirement to lawfully remove any significant tree in the city.
Yeah, we're just following council's direction there with some of the, asking for the definitions and the purpose to be clarified a little bit, and adding the purpose section also. Ordinarily, you get Ryan and myself up here, the chair, and he was not able to make it this evening, so, instead of good cop, bad cop, you just get bad cop, so.
Okay, so then, the draft code is, it's really, the meat of the code is really divided into two sections, removal and retention. So, what you'll see, once we have a chance to get into the code and discuss it in detail, are two distinct sections in the code, and removal is addressed first. So, for existing lots of record, removal standards were established and recommended by the Planning Commission, and what they did was they went away from, they went really to a zoning-based approach. So, what you see here on the screen is right out of the code, actually, and for removal, there were two categories of removal. One is if you're in the R14 or 6 zone, and the other is if you're in any other zoning district in the city except for the town center. You'll recall the town center regulations are in Chapter 21B, and we're talking about Chapter 21A with this new tree retention regulations. So, in the R14 and 6 zone, and Frank will get into why that division was made between those three and the rest here in a moment, but they're further divided into existing lots of record greater than 20,000 square feet or less than 20,000 square feet. That was the threshold the Commission decided to recommend. And you'll see there, essentially, for tree removal on existing lots of record, if you have a lot less than 20,000 square feet in size in one of those three zoning districts, you can remove two significant trees a year, or accumulate total of four trees, four significant trees every five years. And then for lots greater than 20,000, the numbers are a little bit different, but the same concept applies. And then, in the rest of the zones, the requirement is similar to greater than 20,000 square feet.
So, this represents kind of a different approach to the application of the removal and retention requirements. And what we were going for here is, instead of basing it on just a count of the property, we wanted to take sort of a longer-term approach, and that is, where do we want our development to be in our city, and where do we want it to be more, and where do we want it to be less? And to solve for this, what we looked at was the tools being used today for doing that in other contexts of city code. And what became clear to us is that the city uses zoning for that. That's the purpose of zoning, is to sort of funnel the development where you want it and funnel it away from where you don't want it in your city. And we felt that if the tree retention and removal was to have any sort of understandable long-range goal, the use of zoning was actually a pretty good tool for doing that. It allows for the differences in our city that we've already decided based on our zoning laws exist, and we felt that was a good way to apply these regulations. And so, you'll see this across all the regulations. They have this sort of stratification by zoning type, and in order to determine which ones went into which categories, we really looked at the maps themselves. And if you just talk about them as, you know, R1 versus R4 and R6, it's kind of hard to see the differences, but those of us that are sort of, you know, Planning Commission people, and also, I imagine, council people who look at it, you really see where this falls in our city, like the vast majority of R4 stuff in our city. But where the other higher-density stuff is, is along the urban core, and we would like to have some other standards, other ways to apply that in our city. So, I sort of describe it as a funneling approach and using zoning as the tool for managing that funneling of this development of regulations.
Could I ask a question on this particular one? I guess we can go ahead and ask questions as we've already started doing that. People remove trees for a lot of different reasons, and I know some of the more unscrupulous tree, so-called arborists, these are not the ones you're, we're using here, but the so-called arborists, will tell you that all your trees are sick and you need to remove them all, and here's how much it costs. But there are situations where trees are diseased and need be removed. Does this, two parts, does this take into account that, and the other half of that, does this regulation also include replanting regulations?
So, to answer your first question, legitimate hazard trees that are imminent threat to life-safety property, those are exempt from these requirements.
Okay.
The key part to that is what I, one of the things that Frank and I just covered in one of the earlier slides here, is our ability to establish in code, to have a peer review done, to take an arborist report saying, "These four trees are hazardous, they're about to fall on my client's house." We now have the authority in code. We have been doing it today, but we've been doing it without really the authority set in code, excuse me, to require it. So, now we've done that with these new regulations, moving forward to council for your consideration. To answer your second question, yes, replacement would be required.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was the second question, Andrew?
The question was, would replacement, would replanting be required for the lawful removal of those trees? And the answer is yes.
Question, forest practice permittees, how does that apply inside the city? Can you actually go and get a logging permit, or what?
Yeah, the Washington State Department of Natural Resources does have different types of permits for forest practices, and I can, actually, if I can flip to it, once we move through the presentation, I'd be happy to come back to that. I'd like to get the code section up in front of me, and we can talk about that a little bit.
Kathy, do you have a question on this?
These trees that would be removed out of this section, does one have a specific purpose? Is it the city to get that permit, or is it, oh, just because that tree's gotten too big and the grass is on it, too shady? Are those valid purposes?
Yeah, healthy, otherwise healthy trees that are in good standing on an existing lot of record, these limits would apply to those types of trees. If someone wants to, there may be a purpose of doing something on their property that they would like to remove, you know, trees within these limits, or it just may be for aesthetic purposes or otherwise. These are the limits that are being placed. These limits do not, none of this exists currently in our code. In our code currently, someone comes in for a free tree removal permit, the only level, we have no authority in our code to meter or cap any amount of trees being, significant trees being removed from a property. So, this would establish that. Through the free permit that's processed currently, the only thing that we run a check for at the staff level is for a critical area review, to make sure that the significant trees that are being proposed to be removed aren't in a critical area or a critical area buffer.
And what if somebody comes in and they want to take down more trees because they want to install solar, or they want to put a home building in, and it takes more than three trees because the location of the property needs to be up more trees to get?
Yeah, so, the Planning Commission, actually, we were going to cover this in a few slides, but the Planning Commission did spend a fair amount of time talking about variance, reasonable use exception, administrative authority. The interim regulations currently do contain administrative authority for the director to allow a greater reduction of a number of trees being removed from a proposed development without going through any sort of public process or variance-type process. The Planning Commission spent a fair amount of time discussing this, and actually, we actually consulted with our legal counsel for advice on this as well. What legal recommended and Planning Commission ultimately concurred with to forward in the recommendations to you would be to eliminate any administrative discretion or authority in the tree regulations, and simply fall back to our already-existing variance process that's already in our code and established with criteria. So, that is what is part of the Planning Commission recommendations to you for tree regulations, would be, any deviation from these regulations would just go to the variance process. To your question specifically, what if someone wanted to do a, you know, green build or green energy, solar, I think was your example that you used, to establish that on someone's property with an existing house? You know, that's something, when you look at the variance criteria, there's good cause there, where someone has a legitimate, reasonable use of the property and wants to do that. I think the variance criteria would work to that type of proposal, that would allow that to happen, so. And again, someone would go through- So, and again, someone would go through, and they would hire an arborist and say, and probably in consultation with, you know, the vendor for that type of use, solar panels, and say, you know, "Based on how these work, you know, we need to do something with two extra trees or one extra tree to allow the panels to function properly."
Kathy, is your mic on? Councilmember Whitton.
I'm looking at the section that, thank you, imposes the 25%, 35% requirement if you're undergoing new development. So does anything constitute new development? Does it have a defined meaning? I mean, you might want to build an ADU. You might want to build a shed, or a storage something or another.
Or replace your home.
Right, replace the home, do a garage. So nothing's ever, the change is constant. And if you were limited to the four trees, I can see that being for very limited purposes, which I'm not sure that's broadly enough worded there. But the new development could encompass anything, which would be reasonable, I would think, in some contexts. Maybe it needs to be worked on a little more. If I want to build an ADU, that's really a development. If I want to build a new garage and enlarge it and so on, that's a new structure, you know? I mean, so the broader things of coming in, so could you expound on that a little bit?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. We did not define new development as part of this work with the Planning Commission. I will need to double-check to see what we already have on the books in terms of definition related to new development. I believe, though, the general thinking of staff in the Planning Commission during this code process was that new development would be an action that would trigger either a land-use permit submittal or a building permit application. And building permits certainly do have thresholds for what triggers someone to have to submit a building permit application to the city. But that's a great question. That's something we will definitely double-check and come back to the council with a clear explanation of. And then if the council feels like you might want to discuss that, and maybe look at different thresholds, we can certainly do that.
I guess also some options there, you know, alternatives. Because I can see, clearly, in one extreme is where you're subdividing, short plating. Another, on the other spectrum, is where you're doing a minor improvement, like an ADU, or expanding your house. You want to be able to take down more than that eight-tree thing. And if you go back to that eight-tree thing, or four trees, whatever, seems to be very limited to what you can do it for. I mean, could you tell me the purposes?
Well, again, I think the general purpose, going back to the deputy mayor's question from a few minutes ago, I think the question was originally, does someone need to have a purpose? Can someone just decide they'd like some more sunlight on their property? That would be a purpose under these limitations, to remove X number of trees within either a year period or every five-year period. Coming full to the other side of the spectrum, to your question, Councilmember Whitton, if someone was doing an addition to a house, for example, then that would be the purpose for needing to utilize.
The reason I have a concern is, if you look at 37.240, subsection 1, look at A, it says, "The removal of the trees shall be for the purposes of," and it lists two, thinning or maintaining the lots landscaped areas. I mean, there are lots of other reasons. I mean, this is a real limitation. It basically says, unless it's one of these two purposes, you can't use this annual or every-five-years tree removal provision. So, I mean, I think that's too limiting, because you may not, you may need to remove trees, but you want to put up a shed, for example, or a new garage. Well, the shed, if it's, you know, within those 10 by 20, I think it is, square-foot limits, doesn't even need a building permit.
200 square feet, yeah.
But you may need to take down trees for that. And if you can only take down trees under this one for thinning or landscaping purposes, that's just not broad enough. I mean, I, am I reading it correctly?
No, I think it's a good point you've raised, and I think that's definitely something we can, with the council, work on to incorporate a more detailed array on the spectrum of need for looking at removing significant trees.
Yeah, I mean, they may want to do it for review purposes, or to shade, you know, to remove shade around a spot where they want to garden.
Sure.
It could be anything, but it much broader. Was there a particular reason why it was limited to these two?
I can, one thing that we were, we did discuss at Planning Commission, was that we wanted to stay within most of the current definitions of things. And so if there was a process by which the, I don't know, a building permit was issued or something like that, that were already standards for that kind of stuff, that we would sort of dovetail in along with that. I'm not sure about those two being the only limiting things, but that's something we can take back and look, or you guys can look at yourselves. We're trying to, I guess one thing I would just say is, we are trying to avoid redefining things in other sections of code as much as possible, so that we don't have to do this bouncing back and forth thing as we move through, looking at tree retention regulations.
Thank you.
Okay. So we, oh, were there other questions? Okay. So we just talked about removal here a fair bit, and we're going to move on to the other component, which is retention. And again, what you'll see here is the same zone-based approach the Commission took with retention. So the R1, 4, and 6 zones, 35% base retention requirement. All other zones outside of the town center, a 25% requirement.
Don't we have R8 as well?
R8 would be included in all other zones.
Okay.
Yep. And then, the Planning Commission spent a good deal of time talking about something that the council removed in the interim regulations, which was the credit for retention in critical area or critical area buffers. The Commission has come back with a recommendation to council to reintroduce this on a limited basis, in critical area buffers only, so not the actual critical areas like before, but just the buffers only. And what you see here is, and again, staying with the zone-based approach, the R1, 4, and 6 zones could have up to 25% of the required base tree retention amount credited towards a critical area buffer, and all other zones up to 50%. So, again, just a friendly reminder, what used to exist in our old code was a flat 50% credit opportunity. Here, the up to is key. So what the Commission has recommended is, just using a straightforward example, a new subdivision, and 8% of the total site area for a new subdivision, 8% of it is actually critical area buffer. The methodology that has been recommended is, then, 8% of your required tree retention can be credited in that critical area buffer. So, for example, use, sticking with the 8%, if you were required to retain 100 trees as part of your 35% requirement in an R1, 4, 6 zone, eight of those 100 trees could be located in a critical area buffer. So that's part of, it's a scaled credit that the Planning Commission has reintroduced to council in this regard.
So we took considerable public comment on this also, from a wide variety of people. And we were looking from the regulations, the current interim regulations, which were zero, to the older regulations, and trying to balance that with something that made sense. And I think philosophically, where we came down, is that the critical area itself should not be included, because by definition, it's a critical area. We don't want to use that as a negotiating point. It's a critical area. But the buffers can actually, in some circumstances, tolerate, I would use the word, some of this, and also be included in the replanting area also, which I think we'll talk about later. So we wanted to offer a little bit more flexibility within the buffer. There are properties that are small enough that do have critical areas on them, that if you include the buffer in this, it makes that development exceedingly difficult. And so we wanted to at least offer some flexibility in those buffer areas without intruding on the critical area itself. And so that was sort of our thinking in coming up with this. And again, applying the zoning, funneling, based on a zoning approach to this, also gives us some additional strategic influence there.
Councilmember Jaren first, and then Councilmember Whitton.
So Jeff, this is in 21A 37.250.
Correct.
1A says, "A minimum of 35% of significant trees shall be retained within areas unconstrained by environmentally sensitive areas and associated buffers." When I was reading this, then I read the next section where, well, you can get credit for up to 25%. So I think the first section should say at the end, "Except as adjusted per 1B below." Because a minimum of 35% do not have to be retained if you get credit for some in the buffer, you see.
Yep, that's a good comment. Okay. Councilmember Whitton.
Where's the town center in all these? We have no tree retention for town center? Was that deliberately omitted? Am I missing reading it? Is that in the O-zone?
As, yeah, so as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the town center regulations are in 21B, and these regulations are updating 21A.
Right, but are there no tree retention standards for town center? If you're going by zoning, zoning, the town center zoning is different than anything else.
Right. So the town center tree retention regulation, I believe, is 25%.
So we...
So, and again, that's in 21B, so that's not being covered. Any of the changes we're talking about tonight do not impact the town center.
So the town center is exempt from this?
The town center has its own standard in 21B.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Keller, you had a question?
I was answered, actually.
Okay. I do have a question. This is, just because we're talking about buffers at this point, when you look at a lot that has a buffer, what if you find that the buffer has been damaged? In other words, there is a buffer there, but obviously, trees have been removed, for whatever reason, I don't know, who knows? Is there any mitigation for that at all?
So the buffer has been previously damaged at some other point in time.
Presumably by the current landowner or a previous landowner.
So these, I mean, part of the Planning Commission's recommendation for enforcement is, would be based on new violations, in terms of something that's happened historically that we come across.
I don't know about historically, but within a few years, or whatever, you know, at least recent enough that it could have been done by a current landowner.
Yeah, that's, our code compliance system is set up, like many other jurisdictions, to be reactive-based. So we respond to requests that come in. Councilmember Odell, who's not here tonight, will email one in once in a while, up in his area of the city, that he sees street cutting, and he's interested in knowing whether there's a permit for the activity that's occurring. In terms of historical, or even, as you mentioned, within a couple of years, you know, that's something, it's really case-by-case, trying to, it's difficult to go back, and legal will tell you, it's difficult to rewind the clock back in time to open new cases on historical type violations, when we don't have a lot of evidence to work with, so.
Well, your code compliance person presumably goes to a property when somebody's asking for a permit and takes a look, and they see that trees have been removed. So there is evidence.
There is, but, and again...
You've got to see them doing it.
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get to is that a lot of it is case-by-case. It depends on, you know, the age of the activity, how long ago did it occur? We've had, just in my short time here, a little over a year now, we've had code cases on the books that go back five, six, seven years, and it's very difficult, and again, you know, legal will support this, that it's very difficult to assemble fact sets to prosecute. We've had a couple of tough ones along the way, where we've had to, you know, we've had to try and get something out of those cases, but often you can't get a lot in terms of restitution, so.
It was discussed, actually, as part of the penalty section that we're going to get to here in a second. What would we do if someone, you know, took it down right before the inspector came out or something like that? And we hope that the tools that we've put for evaluating the tree removal, the illegal tree removal, would give us some tools. Again, I would concur that it's kind of on a case-by-case basis, a little bit hard to do, but we think that the way that we crafted the language around the penalties for removal will give us a little bit of teeth there, and have enough teeth to actually make that...
Well, I would, obviously, if there's a penalty that's due, yeah, that's fine, but if you could at least look and see, somebody needs to do some restoration here. Clearly, these trees have been cleared sometime within the last few years, and these need to be restored, you know, before you can maybe go to permit.
Arbors can help determine that for us, when they look at a sound board.
I'd like to look at that as a possibility.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
I have a few questions. If you look at 21A 37.240 to subsection C, it said, "Within environmentally sensitive areas and associated buffers, significant trees and other vegetation shall be retained subject to blah-blah." I question the inclusion of the words "and other vegetation," because this is a tree-retention ordinance, and I agree, other vegetation should be retained, but I don't think that should be included here, because this is, the subject of this is the tree retention. And if you're going to put it in one place, then you should put it in every place where it might be relevant, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay. I believe the reason why "other vegetation" was included here is because it's a direct reference to 21A 50, but...
I understand.
That's, again, it's certainly something we can take a look at, so.
Then I have two other questions. When you get to provisions of, oh, and whatever, regarding the credits for trees retained in associated buffers, would a lake setback area, like Pine Lake, has 50 feet, 45, and a setback of five, would those be considered associated buffers? Because lakes are in even critical areas. I mean, there's an argument back and forth, and we may not call them buffers in our code, so I'm not sure what we call them. There's a no-building, there's a setback of 45 feet, as I recall, that we have to keep green for Pine and Beaver, and then 20 for Lakes Mamish. So my question is, would we get credit in those areas? Would they be deemed to be associated buffers, because they're not called buffers?
Right. So with the two lakes and the shoreline regulatory zones, that's a different set of regulations then, that these are, these regulations are overlaid with shoreline regulations, so the shoreline regulations would prevail.
I guess I would have a lot of concern if we were giving credits for doing something we had to do in our small lakes, because the trees are so important to cleansing the water going into the lake.
Right. So, again, shoreline regulations would prevail and supersede these regulations, so hopefully that addresses your question.
There would, might be things even not subject to shoreline, where I'd be concerned if they are in the basin to get these credits, because, again, tree retention has been found in the studies to be important.
So if they're outside of the shoreline regulatory, if a subject area, Councilmember Whitton, was outside of the shoreline regulatory zone, but in the actual basin itself, as you've just suggested, then these regulations would apply, so.
We need to look at that if we have a concern, though. Look at that one.
All right. Let's continue on.
Okay.
Oh, Councilmember Valderram.
First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Bl...
First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Blau and the whole Planning Commission for the work that they've done. And I'll also thank you, Commissioner Blau, for identifying why you didn't look at the critical areas, because that was my first question. The second question, I thank Councilmember Whitten for asking on the town center. I want to follow up on a question that Tom Vance had asked, and then go into one of mine. The mayor had asked a question as far as being able to look at trees being cut down, and more specifically, couldn't it be part of the job description of any new plot being developed to be looking at the trees retention from the past? I mean, I am originally from Maryland, and in Maryland, that's exactly what happened. They would go out to the property and look and see if there had been violations in the past, and you would be fined for those, or you would be taken into account. That was part of the job description that took place. Or if, in the case of one near me, a neighbor had taken trees out of the woods, and as the bike path came in, they found those trees missing, that person was fined, and they continued building away. So could that not be just part of the standard job descriptions when they start analyzing plots, to say, "Let's look at the plot, let's look at what's taken place there before"?
Well, it certainly could be. That's something that we would probably want to spend a little bit more time fleshing out and discussing here with city council, establishing some additional sideboards around that to see what that might look like. That will, that would enable staff to help implement something like that, so.
And then looking back historically to see, has that been a problem to justify putting in the investment there, or if it has not been a significant issue, then we can move forward or not. But that would be something that'd be interesting to look at, because it may be a non-problem that we're not really facing, or insignificant problem, or it may be a major problem that takes place. The other question has to deal with, I like everything I'm seeing here, but I still don't understand where we're going. Originally, in the history of this project, when we began this, it became unknown because of the backlash to the council and the city as a result of the Kemp property and the trees being cut on East Lakes of Mamish Trail. So we then put in this ordinance, and at that time, we said we wanted to be like Redmond. However, as we found out when the ordinance was being put in, thanks to Cameron, the 25 to 35 really was the same because of how we treated the net versus gross. So then we started to say we're going to be putting in more rules and regulations, and while I'm supportive of all of this, is there a model that we're trying to be like, whether it's Mercer Island, Clallum, wherever, that we're trying to look like them? Because when the origins of this came, it was to be like Redmond, and we found we were like Redmond. And so now I want to know where are we going? That's the first question.
Well, the commission did spend a fair amount of time at the beginning of the code development process, they just didn't jump right in and start crafting code. They actually went through a very diligent process over the span of two or three work sessions where it was referred to as the matrix, and it was our, it was a four-column matrix that essentially had our interim regulations, as adopted by the council in October, as well as a breakdown of the codes from Redmond, Issaquah, and... Tigard. Tigard, Oregon. And each of those three jurisdictions use a distinctly different approach when it comes to tree regulations. Redmond uses a retention-based approach, like you've seen here in this code and previous iterations of this. Issaquah uses a caliper-based approach where you, a caliper-based approach where essentially the calipers of all the trees, the diameters of all the trees on a site are added up, and retention and regulation is based off of that. And then Tigard, Oregon, uses a canopy-based approach, and they actually have an urban forestry management plan adopted with policies, and they've crafted code to implement that management plan using a canopy-based approach. So the commission went through each of those three approaches, and the matrix then had the draft policy work that the commission had done to implement council's direction based on what you'd like to see, concepts and new tree regulations. And the commission went through and discussed each code and how those codes did or did not, or how well implement the specific policies the commission had developed and recommended to you based off of your direction. So at the end of it, and maybe Frank can speak to this a little bit, but the commission decided to move forward with continuing with a retention-based approach. So what you see here in this draft code does carry forward in structure and concept similar veins to, again, our previous iterations, being the former code, the interim regulations on to proposed here. I don't know if you want to add anything to that. Yeah, there was considerable discussion about a canopy approach also, and for those of you that don't know, that's using remote sensing technology essentially to build a map of your city and being able to make decisions based on that. And Mike did a great job of showing those, some of those tools to us, and we got some more technical literature on them also. Our feeling about the canopy approach at the commission was that it's a really good metric for measuring how you're doing, and we think that canopy-based metrics should be a part of whatever we're doing on a long-range planning perspective. It is not such a good tool for regulating development, though, and by this, I mean, looking at things at a lot level, trying to make a lot-level decision based on a canopy approach is highly subjective without investing an awful lot of money in some pretty expensive equipment and expensive technology, having to update it all the time. It's not that it's impossible to do. If you go out and do your research on canopy-based approaches, you'll see some incredibly sophisticated stuff using infrared filters and all sorts of interesting algorithms and things like that on the data. But we felt that just at a lot-level, planning-level approach, the retention really gave us the tools and the direction that we want to take the city of Mamish.
I would say, I would add to that, that my suspicions on the canopy approach, and it sounded kind of interesting when I first heard about it, was that it favors mature trees.
Yeah, it doesn't really tell the difference sometimes.
You don't want to have all mature trees, because they all have a lifespan, and you do want trees coming up. Younger trees are different ages.
Yeah, and they do kind of draw you a black and white picture of your canopy, and you don't even know, for example, what the health of that canopy is. It just, it is a canopy. Is it a healthy canopy? Are those healthy trees? Are they dangerous trees? You really have no way of knowing, just taking a picture from, you know, a mile up. So, but we do, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater on it, because I think it does offer a good way to evaluate over time how you're doing in your city, and you should keep an eye on what your overall canopy is over time.
Excellent. From what I understand, then, you're saying we're going to be taking the retention approach that was similar to the Redmond's. This would be a Redmond-plus type of approach that we're going to? And our modeling, then, if we wanted to compare before and afters, it would be a good comparison to see what would be taking place under our old code, under Redmond's code for a baseline approach of seeing what takes place?
It could be of sorts, and again, I think my reference to Redmond, using a base retention requirement, and they certainly share that, both, again, every code we've had here plus Redmond's code, so. There were bits and pieces of all of them, basically, that we pulled into it. I think the hybridizing of a zoning-based overlay to a retention approach is, we didn't see anybody else doing exactly that, but I think you can take aspects of that and call it, as we would in the software world, a best-of-breed approach. We think that they both, those tools, offer some good techniques for use in our city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whitten, I mean, I'm sorry, Huckerby.
I was just going to comment, when I went to the Urban Forestry Symposium, Portland does have a lot-based canopy retention. That takes a tremendous amount of public input to make that decision, and their lot canopy retention is 45% of tree coverage, which is pretty significant. And so a lot of the communities within the city that didn't have that had to grow into that, and so there's been some real pushback on those things, too.
Yeah.
Continue. More?
I have a quick question. It's going backwards a little bit, but Councilmember Valderrama made me think about this.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. Maybe I need to speak into it. This is really an enforcement question of sorts, or part of the process of the buffers. When somebody submits their plans, are you going to go out and look at the buffers as to where they are and actually do the count based on the, where the buffers are? Because the difference between Redmond and ours is Redmond isn't, I don't think they're looking at the buffers. This is unique, I guess, or different than Redmond's. And I actually think this, the buffer exception is really good, but from a staff point of view, is that going to be something that we can actually monitor very well?
Yeah, so that's a good question. That information is already required in plans submitted, so that's information that we're already getting, and we had been getting it historically anyway to be able to implement the previous code, the old code that was left behind with the adoption of the interim regulations, so.
Just to add on to that, then, you know, the interesting thing is, the buffers, I think, have changed through the years a little bit, the distance, and what made me think of that is also you're looking at policing violations, you know, going, looking later, but very difficult to actually look at, when did this happen, when we've actually had variations within our code, you know, when did it happen, at what particular time did that happen?
The historic, just quickly, not to go too far backwards, but just back to the dialogue we had earlier about the historical perspective and enforcement provisions. That's something I'd really like to, having only been here a short period of time, that's something I would like to work with my staff on a little bit, to be able to properly frame that for you in a future conversation, the size, sizing the problem correctly. And as Councilmember Valderrama, I believe, correctly commented, how big is, is it a huge problem, is it a small problem, and, you know, correlate our level of effort or discussion around the size of, the correct size of the problem. So that's something I can definitely come back to you with.
Councilmember Whitten?
You know, following up on some of Councilmember Romero's comments and others, where even if it wasn't unlawful, there has been some activity clearing a lot. Let's say they're below the one acre or something. I mean, I can think of a property on 212th that cleared everything, and people were very sad to see the trees go, apart from development, and then a year or so later, they went into short platt and things. I'm very concerned that we give them, that we would start from the as-is rather than what was. I mean, I'd like to see something in the tree retention code that said if there had been significant clearing and grading, grading or removal of trees under any exemption for the small lots, and then maybe we could refer back to the aerials. Because, I mean, this was a lot that was just completely canopied and became barren, a wasteland, really. It was just sad. Now it's being short-platted, as I recall, so I don't think people like that. I mean, I think there should be a replanting requirement when it...
That's what I was going to say. I think a reforestation requirement before you get a permit.
Yeah, or as part of that.
Or at least part of the process.
Making it a condition of that. So I would like, maybe, I don't know how much you want now in the way of direction or thoughts, but I would like to see something before we go to a first reading or at least a second reading.
Sure, sure, okay. Well, perhaps that's something we'll definitely have some follow-up on and get some additional direction.
We're getting two shots. We're getting today and tomorrow's first reading, so you think of something else.
Well, I'm sure all these things, I mean, you know, it's going to be only when you think it through, because it's very complex when it overlays everything.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, too, but I'd like to wait until he finishes.
Let's have some more slides.
Lyman has a comment.
Lyman, yes.
I was just going to say that...
That's not working, Lyman, so I can't tell you.
Oh, the buttons aren't working, thank you. I was just going to say that tomorrow night is a first reading on this, but it is a first hearing as well. So we will be soliciting public comment on that particular thing, so that should help us.
All right.
Okay, actually, just go back quick. Just one more quick thing on this slide, and we already discussed it earlier, the variance process, so, and again, at legal's advice and the Planning Commission's concurrence, the recommendation before you was to streamline all exception requests to the existing variance process in the code. Okay, next slide. Okay, incentivizing. The commission spent a fair amount of time talking about not only the retention of landmark and heritage trees, but also looking at incentivizing the preservation of those trees as kind of a backbone to a clustering or continuous-type canopy concept. So what the commission came up with for each type of tree respectively, what you see here on the screen is a 200 and 150% credit for the preservation of landmark trees when directly associated with either, in the 200% case, continuous canopy, and in the 150% case, screening or understory-type landscaping. Same for, same concept for heritage trees, only the credit is a little bit less, 175 and 125% credit. So how that works, just a straightforward example, if you're required to retain 10 trees for your proposal, if you have a landmark tree, a landmark tree essentially would count for two instead of one of those trees. And then down here at the bottom of the screen, you heard me mention earlier, under the elimination of incentives with the interim regulations, the Planning Commission recommends reintroducing one of those incentives. It's the onsite recreation space one. So instead of, in the old code, I believe it was, it was 35% perhaps, where if you had your tree, your base tree retention percentage go up to 35, you could get an open-space recreation reduction. Well, in this case, what you'll see now is with a 40 or 45% retention in conjunction with continuous canopy, you can get up to a 50% reduction in onsite recreation space required. That equates to about 300, I think we figured out it was about 300 square feet per lot in a subdivision, the ORS requirement, so I think the input, and Frank may want to comment on this, but I think the general feeling of the commission, and I think there was some public testimony around this, if you're going to have an incentive like this, you need to make it significant to be able for developers to look at that.
It was interesting, because it was something where there was actual concurrence between the builders and the environmental component supporters, that incentives that actually don't incentivize what we want are kind of useless. And we feel that these numbers were large enough to give you, give someone pause to think, you know, "Oh, I have a landmark tree, let's save it and get the credit for it," you know. One of the expressions that we used a lot when we were talking about this is that if you're going to have something in the code, you want people to be able to say, "Okay, I understand what that is, I understand what that means, and I can apply that." And we feel that these incentives give us that. They drive us in the direction that we want to be with these regulations.
Is the city subject to these, to this code? Or if the city wanted to, let's say, build its maintenance plant, and it was a really wooded lot, would the city have to do the retention also?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Mayor Huckerby, quick question?
No, I wanted to go on, go ahead, go on, because I have a question, but I'll ask it later.
Okay. We're going to shift a little bit in our focus here to replanting, and so in the interim regulations, currently, there's a one-to-one replanting requirement for the lawful removal of significant trees. That's maintained in the Planning Commission's recommendations here. Additionally, for the removal of heritage and landmark trees, those replanting requirements are scaled up a little bit, heritage two-to-one and landmark three-to-one. I also just want to note, this photograph, actually, the Planning Commission had just finished with their recommendations back in June on this code, and I was up in Vancouver, B.C., two days later on Saturday, and was walking down the street and saw this building, and it's kind of hard to see there up on the screen, but you can see the tree. and it's kind of hard to see there up on the screen, but you can see the trees up on the top of the building.
Does that constitute replanting, or?
Yeah, or, yeah.
On the deck, or?
Yeah, on the recreation space up on top of the building, or whatever they've got up there, so.
At least the deer aren't going to be nibbling on that.
That's right.
Now, I do have my question.
Sure.
When you have someone replant, how do we, how do we ensure that those trees are going to survive, and if they don't, how do we replace them? This year particularly, everything is so distressed, and we were walking along the trail the other day, and some of the plantings that the county has done, they might not just well have thrown them into the lake, or, because they are sadly just dying. And frankly, people's trees, and particularly big roadies, are beginning to get so distressed they're dying. So how we, if a developer comes along, do we require them, particularly under circumstances like this year, do we require them to replant immediately? Can they delay it a little bit?
Or maintain.
Or how do they maintain this? But like, a new development, anybody who's replanting at this point in time would really struggle to make that tree survive.
Yeah, you know, I've noticed quite a bit of that, obviously, this year as well, with the existing conditions. So with landscaping and replace, and/or replacement, in this case, when we're talking about trees, one of the problems we faced in the past is that it's, it's cheaper after one year for a developer to come and just replant vegetation that's, that's not survived in that first-year period. They bond for landscaping and replanting, but it's, it's the, you know, it's economics, basically. So we did talk about that, actually, with the Planning Commission, and we've got, you know, and that's something we may want to talk about a little bit further with council, is actually stiffening up those requirements a little bit more to ensure success the first time around.
I believe we also used language, I can't remember exactly, but there was discussion about, you know, evaluation at maturity. That is, you don't get it evaluated when you stick it in the ground, you get it evaluated what it's going to be at maturity, and there's tables and charts for that kind of stuff. And we did talk about some of that. I'm not quite sure how hard that landed in the code, but we can, it's certainly something we can take a look at, beefing up a little bit.
Councilmember Valderrama first, then Keller.
On that question, I was on that trail walk, and it's correct, the number of these were not planted properly. More significantly, the second reading would take place in September, is that correct? Is it currently anticipated? And at that point, it would be codified as an ordinance, and everybody would have to, from that day going forward, if I'm not mistaken. So my question would be, given that we were just talking about the trail, would King County then have to adhere to the new rules under their new permits for sections 2A and 2B under the new ordinances?
So section 2A, that would depend on the date of a future permit submittal for their clearing and grading permit. Section 2B, my understanding is?
That's pretty far down the road, so.
Yes, that's perhaps quite a ways down the road.
There's some contention, so there's a possibility until it's done, that they would then have to abide by this.
There is possible contention out there, that's correct, so.
What do they say in Star Trek, "Make it so"?
Councilmember Keller?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, if you're going to have some on this, but I wanted to jump over to the receiving site conversation.
Another slide, or?
Is that another slide?
I think we're getting to that, yeah, that's the next slide.
Don't you hold until we get to that slide.
Okay, go ahead, yeah. So right into Councilmember Keller's question, I think, that he's lining up. So the Commission has also provided in its recommendations options for off-site tree replacement, and the intent here isn't to have someone do all the replanting on another site. The intent here was to provide an option where, the whole point of doing the replacement trees is hopefully they're all going to survive and contribute to the city's long-term urban forest character. If and when we run into situations where onsite replanting, in the opinion of a qualified professional, is not feasible or in the best interest, and that a partial off-site would be more beneficial to the long-term success of all the trees, this is where these provisions come into play, to be able to, to provide for that. So when the Commission discussed this, they were pretty clear, if there were going to, if there was going to be an off-site tree replacement option, receiving sites had to be within the city limits to contribute to our urban forest character. They would be approved on a case-by-case basis. They'd have to be, if not already, put into some sort of secure tract for preservation in perpetuity. So whether that's a public-owned property, or whether that would be establishing a separate tract or a conservation easement over a private property, there would be some options there for that. And there were also some options provided for in the code as part of an overall replanting effort to actually do other landscape restoration type options, such as stream daylighting or restoration, that could be done in lieu of some of the replanting requirement. So an example would be, you have a new subdivision or short platt, and we have a professional arborist opinion that only 75% of the trees can be replanted on-site. Another option to make up that 25% replanting requirement could be another landscape restoration type option. So that's something the Commission discussed and put into the code for your consideration.
We wanted to make a hierarchy of sorts, not a sort of a firm hierarchy that it has to go in this order, but reflecting the intention of this, of the overall policies in the comprehensive plan, as well as in this, in this document. And so if you, if you read this, you can see what we're trying to do there. We're trying to funnel this into places where the trees will be both significant and protected and, and can thrive. And so we weren't looking just at making a way that you can take a tree out of property A and drop it into property B. That was not what we were trying to do. And, and we had significant discussion around whether private versus public property has the same weight, for example, in terms of a replanting location. So we really are just trying to create some sort of a hierarchy here and giving the city some tools for approving these kind of things when they come up.
Councilmember Whitten?
I guess I have a question about the word "not feasible." Is that not feasible strictly from the tree standpoint, or is it not feasible if it makes the development, if you can do it, and the percentages and stuff on-site, but you're not going to get the development that the developer wants?
The term "not feasible" in regards to off-site tree replacement was specifically considered and discussed by the Planning Commission to the success of being able to meet the replanting requirement on-site.
So it's, you look at it only from the tree standpoint? You don't look at it in terms of what the developer's trying to accomplish with his development? Because, I mean?
Again, that was the, that was the, from what I recall, and Frank may want to chime in on this, that was the specific discussion of the Planning Commission in their consideration.
One of the things I guess I would ask staff to look at is to take a look at that issue and come up with some options for us to consider, because I think you might have a great development, but it, I mean, it might be bifurcated by trees, and you really want to create a community, and the trees won't let you do that if you keep them on-site right in the middle of everything. So, or commercial development in particular, where, you know, your parking and other amenities have to be in a certain order in order to accommodate the development. So I think the not feasible needs to be, and I know when we looked at the comp plan policy on that, I was the one that said, "We're not feasible." My thoughts on not feasible were much broader, because I want to accomplish the purpose of a development in the zoning and still protect the trees, but give, there's some flexibility there.
So one of the things I would say is that the use of zoning to drive some of, you know, how we bifurcate these, actually, I think helps what you're asking for there, is that you would have different, the different standards applied in different zoning areas. We also did discuss the idea of, you know, what if trees are a barrier to community, for example? And, you know, we tried to come up with some good examples of it, and we just had a hard time finding them, where someone could look at that and objectively go, "That's bad," you know, that, that, and the opposite was kind of like, "Yeah, but if you have these two communities and trees in between them isn't a bad thing." You know, it actually adds an area where kids could play or something like that. It was just hard to find some examples of trees making things worse, I guess is what we, what we were saying.
I didn't say making them worse, I said where you couldn't accomplish the development within the scope of zoning. And I'm not, I mean, I don't know how you'd limit that, but I want some flexibility, I was hoping for in that regard. On the other hand, I don't want it to be an excuse for the developer to go and rape the land and, like they used to do, you know? I mean, they still do, they just better cut everything they can, so.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I came back to, just in talking about this, was that this is still a tree retention ordinance, not a, an ordinance to guide all development regulations and things like that. This is really to address how trees function in terms of that. And if you get into the use cases of how it affects development, how, you know, can you get a variance for it, all kinds of stuff, we really want to defer to stuff that's already in the code for variances around those things. So I agree, it's a little bit tricky, might need some smithing around that, but we also were hesitant to add in things that could be used as a wedge or a.
Excuse.
Excuse, yeah, for, for.
Not compliant.
Yeah, meaning not compliant, yeah. Remember, this is a tree, we'll come back to this when we get to the penalty section. This is a tree retention ordinance that we're writing here, not a development guideline ordinance for the city.
Right. Councilmember Keller?
Which, I want to go back to this, the receiving sites. This actually might be something that's involved with the urban forest management plan, but boy, what a great idea. And I'm hoping that the city would be proactive with this piece of it, because this looks like this might be really a mutual beneficial plan for not only the developers with their specific site, if they're having some difficulty, but also if the city is actually planning for this, so that it's not happenstance, oh, we happen to have some trees here and we can fill them in in a particular area. We actually have receiving sites that have been well-developed, and we have a long-term plan for.
Yeah, we did discuss that. One of the things we talked about was, do we have an inventory of these sites today? And we really don't. I mean, there's, but, but we think that would fall into the urban forestry plan, where there would be some recommendations in what those receiving sites are. And I'll just give you an example, we would often be sitting here, and we'd kind of look out the window here, and we go, "Okay, do we want more trees over there, but we can't, we don't have them there now, and we want them there, could we use this as a tool for getting them there?" You know? And, and I think the answer is yes, but I think it has to be done in the context of, is it the right kind of tree? Is it the right kind of, is it suitable? And I think those are really questions for an arborist in, under an urban forestry plan to address.
I'm wondering if we could go beyond just the public areas also, that if we could arbitrate in some.
I think it's this private as well, I believe.
That, that there could be some coordination with private.
Well, I think we had an example just recently where property owner down near the lake wanted a conservation reduction on their property taxes, because they wanted to keep that property in an undeveloped state with trees. So if you tied that into, if you also accepted trees for mitigation to fill in the holes, you know, could we do something else?
Yeah.
Great.
And I think that the key language there, in what you see up there, is also "secure tract," and that is that if you're going to do this, you can't just put them into an area that's also slated for future development.
Exactly, no, I understand.
And, and the idea that it is a, a long-term secure tract is a pretty important feature of this section of the code.
Okay. We're almost done, actually. So enforcement, so we're shifting focus now from Title 21A over to Title 23, code compliance. And there's really two things here. One is, I'll cover the, the second one first. We moved, from the interim regulations, there was a section on remediation for if you're unlawfully removing trees, the number of 20 trees you have to plant for every one you remove, or whatever the ratio is. That language, we've actually moved from 21A to actual code compliance 23. So that's more of just a housekeeping item. The big one here is the first bullet, and this was a lengthy discussion with the Commission related to council direction for stiffer penalties for unlawful removal or damage. And I think I'm just going to let Frank take it away and explain the big number up on the screen.
So Commissioner Vice, the Chair Coleman is not here this evening, and it was actually my suggestion that it also included a year in the stockade for removal of trees illegally.
Do we have a stockade?
No, but I would, I would approve that.
We could build one out of the trees that they personally took down.
I would submit a motion to create a stockade. What we were looking at here is what types of actions would we want to take when someone violates this code? And our thinking on this was that cities have very different approaches to this. Some have very minimal penalties, actually, and some have much steeper than this, actually. And you can see it when you drive around the cities. I was up in Kenmore, who has one of the strongest, actually has, I think, 2,000? Is it 2,000, I think, per square, per inch? There's a lot of trees in Kenmore, it's beautiful up there, even in and around the properties and things like that. You can tell the, the effect of that. But we were looking at, originally at a cost-based approach, and that is that, what's the cost of this tree? And what we came down with is, we wanted something a little bit stiffer than just cost-based, because if it's just cost-based, what's going to happen? It's going to be factored in. People are going to go, "Okay, it's the cost of the tree, I'm going to do the math there, I can take out five trees." That's what we wanted to actually disincentivize. And so if this seems like a large number, when you actually apply this to a tree, that's, say, it's a, you know, a 15 DBH tree, that's a fairly large penalty. That's intentional. We are trying to disincentivize the unlawful removal of trees. This is not a negotiating point, this is not a excuse, this is not something that we want people to use as a budgetary tool in development projects. We would like this to truly and meaningfully disincentivize the unlawful removal of trees, and that's why you see that large number there.
It looks to me like the park itself is about a $3,000 penalty.
So that was our, that was our thinking on that.
Now, I'd like to ask a question about how are we going to, if somebody calls and says, "Somebody killed this tree," what kind of evidence are we going to be looking for to determine that somebody did indeed do that? I was at a party last week, and you look around, and there are all these green trees, and there are three very dead trees. So people have a view. But there is a suspicion that they were, those trees were killed, but there's no evidence that they were killed.
Yeah, and I, I think, going back to Frank's comment, that's where, I mean, a professional arborist would need to, to take, I heard someone whisper in the audience here, copper spikes, it might have been Paul, I think, I heard. Yeah, well, the deputy mayor was speaking there, but, so, that would definitely call for a qualified professional to, to take a look and to make an assessment of what went wrong or what happened.
CSI cement.
That's exactly what I was going to say. We actually had a discussion about also something that was brought up earlier, is that what if the damage was done earlier? And two points to make about that is that we have some pretty good tools already at the city's disposal for, you know, looking, looking into these kinds of issues and, you know, land use and things like that. But the other is one of timeliness. I think that if these are the regulations that we're going to be putting forward, then I think someone on council said, "Let's just do it, you know, let's make it so," because I'm also concerned that people will see this coming and, and try and, and take advantage of it.
Sure.
So we did talk about some of these use cases, we do believe that there are tools in the, in the city already for investigating these things. It's, it's not going to be a perfect science, just like any forensic work, and, but I, I think that having an arborist authority and an urban forestry plan to, to fall back on, maybe some canopy technology to also detect that kind of stuff might be useful. There's a couple of things we can do there, so I feel like we have, we're working towards being able to, to handle that pretty well.
Councilmember Jaren, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions.
I have a couple of questions, but I did want to comment that, excuse me, I think you've, the planning commission's really done good work here, along with staff. Certainly, the civil, the penalties there, a 30-inch tree is $45,000. That'll cause someone to have second thoughts.
Well, it's hard to balance that against the cost, the value of the tree to a logger at that point.
Well, absolutely. And, you know, that's where some of the formulas that we looked at came in, is they were actually, what you could sell the tree for. And we said, "Well, if you're not two or three times that, it's just going to be factored in," you know? And that's what we were looking for.
So, a couple of comments. Back in Exhibit 2, protective measures. At 5B, you talk about tree protection. Barriers shall be installed five feet beyond the drip line. So do we have, in the definition session, section, what a drip line is? And in fact, when we talk about heritage landmark and significant trees, I know those are all defined back in 21A15, but maybe we could actually, in parentheses, when, somewhere in this section, say that, well, landmark tree is 32-inch, greater than 32-inch, heritage tree is greater than 22-inch. Significant tree, do we still have for deciduous and...
Yeah.
Coniferous different ones?
Correct.
Then another question on the next page, Exhibit 2, that would be in 21A37, 276. We have preventive measures. And it says, "Trees shall not be topped." I think you probably should say "significant trees," don't you think? And then on B, well, there are two Bs there. Or not two Bs, I'm not sure.
Oh, yep. No, good catch.
Speaking of Shakespeare.
Yeah, that's right. At least Mike caught it. It says, "Pruning of visible dead wood on trees to be protected or relocated." I'm not sure how you relocate the prunings. So I'm not sure what's meant by that.
The tree to be relocated? I read that, too. And that's what I assumed, that you could prune the dead wood on a tree that's going to be relocated, but...
Then, as you go down to 27A37.280, tree replacement standards. We're talking about landmark trees, heritage trees. And then we come to D. It says, "Coniferous trees shall be replaced by coniferous trees native to Washington." And this is one that gives me heartburn, because I just love red, western redwood or sequoia, which aren't native to Washington. But they thrive here. And actually, with climate change, this may become a zone for them. So, but then I went a little further, and I look in G, and it says, "Replacement trees shall be primarily native species." So I said, "Well, okay, if G overrides D, then you could plant your sequoia." I did plant one up in Lake Forest Park, and it thrived very well.
Don, I usually don't agree with you on the native trees, but when I was looking at the City of Seattle tree replanting and their list of trees, they're looking at, because of weather conditions, a lot of Pineapple Express. And they're talking about large-leaved conifers. And they're talking about oak trees, large-leaved oak trees, which are not native, and actually hard to find. But that would be the preferred type of tree to plant because of these coming heavy rain situations.
So my suggestion is we not have it too restrictive. And then I have another question on the, on the next page, under tree maintenance. Says, "A healthy condition by the applicant throughout the life of the project." What, what is the definition of life of a project? Is that simply the bonding period of a year, or what?
Oh, I'm sorry. Where are you looking specifically on the next page?
Number 5, tree maintenance.
Third sentence.
"All required replacement trees and relocated trees shown on an approved permit, whether located onsite or offsite, shall be maintained in healthy condition by the applicant throughout the life of the project."
Yep.
And that kind of goes back to what the mayor was talking about.
Yeah, first, so for a subdivision, we would, we would typically take that through final inspections for new homes being built.
So then they can die, or...
Or at that point...
But by the applicant. Well, by the applicant, right.
Okay, got it.
And then my last question is, at the end of the attachment, B Exhibit 3, where we talk about mitigation for unlawful tree removal. 1A, it says, "Removed or damaged trees with a DBH equal to or greater than eight inches." Are we talking about eight inches for coniferous and 12 for deciduous at that point?
Either or. And this language was taken straight from the interim regs, so...
So an eight-inch deciduous tree is going to qualify even though it's not a significant tree? That seems a little contradictory.
Yep, well, that's, actually, that's a good catch. So, and that was something that, if we're going to define them as significant trees, let's take that follow-through.
Okay.
Councilmember Keller, and then Witten?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on, one of the most impressive slides regarding trees that I ever saw was when Evan put up that slide where the developer was putting in the trees, and they were in between the houses, underneath the eaves, any place that they could put them. And so I've been looking at this, the penalties, where it says, "Replacement with eight trees, with four trees." And I don't know that, through my reading, I saw anything that talked about location. It just talked about replacement. And I'm wondering, if we're imposing that penalty, are we going to see trees stuck in a, on a piece of property that have no chance of surviving?
Isn't that why we have the receiving areas?
Well, this is the penalty. It's just speaking of the penalty.
Yeah, and I think that's where that gets back to very early here in the presentation, talking about being able to establish in code our ability to require professional evaluation and to give us the ability to take unreasonable situations like that and find reasonable solutions from the qualified professionals.
So if they didn't have room on their property in a particular way, the penalty might be to go to a receiving site somewhere else? That would be the way you would address it?
Could be, yep.
I think having an arborist, one of the things that I found very, I had a neighbor who was actually an arborist, and one thing that was very useful was he'd be able to say, "If you plant this here, this is what it's going to do in 10 years." You know, "These two trees together, this is what they're going to do in 10 years." And I think that would go to that. If we had that arborist authority at the city, and we've invested that authority, it would address that situation where someone was just planting something under the eaves. The arborist, arborist would look at that and go, "No."
The, just to wrap up here, this is the final slide. And the picture on the left there is one that I found. I used it in a presentation in the Master Builders Association.
That counts, right?
They got a kick out of it, too, yeah. So, in terms of the next steps, as Acting City Manager mentioned earlier, tomorrow we will have a public hearing to give council an opportunity to hear from folks that have participated in the process to date, and new folks perhaps might come out as well to provide their thoughts. It would be great tomorrow for, and you've had a lot of good questions and good comments here tonight. It would be great to be able to get some more of your thoughts as we head into the summer recess here, so that staff can, can work on whether it's researching or putting together options for different questions that you may have, so that we can come back in September and present those out of the gate there sometime in early September. The one other thing I will mention is, and it was back to Councilmember Jaren's, one of his catches from a few minutes ago there. We have gotten some comments from legal as well on the planning commission's recommendations. And Kim Pratt was able to go through, sometimes when you look at, when you stare at something long enough, it all kind of starts to blend together. So Kim was kind enough to donate a little of her time and go through the planning commission's draft code with a fresh set of eyes and detail. And she has provided us some comments similar in to what Councilmember Jaren had a couple of thoughts here as he went through and read the code. So we do have a list that, we'll also then show those for you to be able to, to see what those recommended changes are from legal as well.
Councilmember Witten, and then Councilmember Valderrama.
I have two things. Yes, I'd like to consider, I'm not sure I want to do it, but I'd like to consider adding a section to our criminal codes, making a willful violation of these tree removal a misdemeanor.
Just removal, or would you include damage?
Probably anything in...
I would include, because I would include damage as well.
But I mean, and not a gross misdemeanor, but a minor one. But I think it's important to have that as a tool in our toolbox for somebody where it's really egregious. I mean, we've, we've been told, you know, in the past that it would be difficult to enforce some of the penalties from a civil standpoint. But, and I know criminal is usually a higher standard, but if it's really a willful violation, I just feel that that's pretty significant.
And we did have that discussion with the planning commission, and staff had that discussion with legal counsel. And the input we got from legal counsel was actually to recommend, it doesn't mean we can't have the conversation again, but just the reason why it's not in here in the planning commission recommendations was, it was recommended by legal to not have a criminal violation and stick with the civil, so...
Well, but that's, that's not a poli, I mean, that's...
No, no. It was just, it was something the planning commission had inquired about, we had a conversation with legal, that was the input that came back.
Then I have a second thing, and I think maybe, I don't know if tonight's the night, or tomorrow night, or when, or maybe by an email response. I would like to see an example of how this would apply on a heavily wooded parcel, one if it were R1 to R6, and one if it were the other. And I'll give you an example. We have a beautiful property that we rent for a dollar a year of the Y, next to Pine Lake Middle School. It's about nine acres, and it's very heavily forested. It's a beautiful parcel. It's surrounded by the school and residential, and I guess the bus barn may be somewhere. And I want to know how that would, if you assumed this ordinance were in effect, and it applied to that parcel, I want to know how it would limit the opportunities we would have to use that parcel for any of the things we've talked about, for example, an indoor soccer court or something that's heavily using every available space except for this ordinance.
Sure. We had looked at, with the interim regulations, we had looked at some, some prior examples of plats and subdivisions. Those were examples that we had data for, to be able to work with. I'm not sure if we have that data for the Y property, but it's something, certainly I'll follow up with, with staff on here at City Hall to see what we can do.
Okay, but if, somewhere in there, hopefully sooner than later, maybe this, over the summer, you could send an email or something.
Sure.
I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot. But I just, you don't get a sense of it until you hear somebody saying, "Oh, my gosh, this really hurt me because..."
Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, no, I would reiterate the importance of what Councilmember Witten said. And I'd like to see that model, not just with the past, the current, but also have the redment, so we have that. Because that was the original basis of where we were headed at. And so I'd like to see those baselines, to see where we are. If you have an existing model, that's fine. If you have the Y, that's fine, but to be able to take it. The other thing that I think all of these are admirable and supportable, I'm curious to know is, what percentage of the city will actually be impacted by this? And we've had the conversation early by, "Is this really geared to new development?" And then, as I understand it, in our just shy of 20-square-mile city that we have here, we only have about 300 acres of new development land. And so I want to know, are they going to be taking the onus of this? Or how will this be spread out? What's the estimate of who will be bearing the onus of this? Ideally, was, we were talking about it would be across the city. And that's not clear to me from when I'm looking at this. It seems like this is mostly being geared to new development. And so hopefully, you'll be able to refute that or address this.
Oh, Ramiro, if you read the front part of it, they also talk about existing lots.
Well, I understand that...
And if existing lots, like you or I, want to take our place, Jack.
Well, I know, and Councilmember Witten had talked about the ADUs. But as I understand there, and I could be wrong, we only have 700 acres of that. So further, that could be the infill areas ADU. So that's why I'd like to get a sense of how is this going to be taking place? Because we're not all going to be building on our lots either. So I'd like to get a grasp of how many people will be impacted, or what percentage, or get some feel of that.
Sure. I think, as Deputy Mayor just commented, that, you know, the regulations really, when we covered them here tonight, there's a clear retention component as it relates to new development activities. And then there's a clear removal component that relates to lots that are in existence today. So, but I, I think you've given me a few things here that I can work with, and we'll, we'll see what we can do for you.
And we'll have more tomorrow.
Well, hold, but I guess where I'm going, I know that it applies to everybody in the city. But what do we really think is going to be taking place on development, and where this will be applied? So I understand the application could be to anybody, to myself, to yours, or anybody else. But the actual application of what we estimate will take place in this city is what I'm trying to base upon. I know we're new in the ADU areas. We don't have many of those going up. That's a new phase that we're going through. But again, given that we have the, those 300 acres...
One of the reasons I kept bringing up solar is because that is something that has a real potential. California is doing solar. And if they, if those same solar developers come into our, our area and are putting the solar in and then leasing it, it'll make it so much more affordable that it's apt to really jumpstart the activity of solar.
Oh, and cutting down the trees to get the...
Absolutely. This would impact, we, we actually had someone come out and look at ours. And if we put it on the house, it would be 11 trees down. If we put it on poles on our upper lot, upper part of our lot, it would only be seven trees down. But if you start to multiply that with everybody in the neighborhood, you're going to have a lot of trees down.
Yeah, more sun, less trees.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We will have, and thank you, Vice Chair Blough. Appreciate your doing this.
Thank you.
Very, very well done. This is an interesting report, and I think, you know, although we have a lot of questions and perhaps some changes, it looks like a very good transfer. We will have a public hearing tomorrow evening, as well as additional questions. Okay, let's, I've been asked to, if we could take a five-minute break, and so let's try to do that. Okay, let's get started again, everybody here, I think. Next on our agenda is the Dothee Hill Urban Growth Boundary Update. Mr. Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, Jeff, Thomas, and I will be giving you basically a very quick, brief update on where we are with the process as it relates to the Dothee Hill UGA area.
Can we call it the Dothee Hill Notch area? Because we're, I understand the notch issue, issue, but if we define it as the Dothe Hill Notch, then it's how we've for 10, 15 years referred to it.
Yeah, that's true.
Explain that, or do you want me?
We, we actually decided not to call it a notch for strategic purposes, there are other notches within the area, within urban growth boundary throughout the county, and we decided to differentiate this area from other circumstances.
It's like an annexation area, rather than just a notch.
But many of those are like hundreds of acres, this one's 46 acres.
So essentially, we're trying to differentiate this, and I do understand your perspective on it, and we frequently fall back into that, so we're doing our very best, but you may, we may slip from time to time, and do call it the notch, but we're trying not to do that at this point, so without further ado, I'll turn this over to Jeff Thomas.
Thank you again, Mr. Acting City Manager, so I'm going to walk you through a short series of slides here, more of background type information, and then Lyman is going to talk specifically to the city's current strategy with regards to moving the Dothe Hill Study Area into having it moved from rural to urban designation with King County, so what we've got here is just a vicinity map showing, generally speaking, where it's located, it's southeast corner of the city, and then the larger aerial photo here just describes the area, and you can see it actually has a pretty good existing tree canopy type area within the notch, as well as a large wetland.
The site is, the area is approximately 46 acres, generally speaking, it's developed at a low-density residential, there is a large wetland pond and a stream cross-section corner of the designated area, it is surrounded by city on three sides, mostly with a single-family residential development at R4.
R4 blocks, yeah.
Within the area itself.
All, all but a few, there are a few vacant parcels.
I believe there are two or three parcels that are not, there is a map in the special study area that I believe is part of the packet several pages back, and it, there's signified by a gray area.
Yes.
Also, in relationship to Kathy's question, it's developed out, and a lot of it's at one or one and a half acres, it's, the zoning's now five.
Correct.
But if it went into the city, and the potential was R1 to R4, there would undoubtedly be more development available.
Although it still has a fairly significant buffer and critical areas, so.
Absolutely.
A lot of it is never going to be developed, yeah.
I agree, but I'm just saying, there is definitely some potential for new development.
The area is currently accessed via private roads from southeast Dothe Hill Road, and here's a, we just touched on this a moment ago, the current designation of the area by the King County Comprehensive Plan is rural, and it's zoned at RA5, five acres per dwelling unit. Here's the existing land use pattern, and I think just what we were discussing, there are a couple vacant parcels there shaded in gray, right in the middle, and you can see the rest of the existing property pattern there, there's a couple larger parcels to the north, northwest corner, and then along the eastern boundary, you've, you've got your smaller one to two acre parcels, as well as down in the very southwest, and then there's the pond and wetland area that we were referencing with a significant buffer there that goes around.
Is that manmade?
Well, that is our understanding, there, there is a berm along the southern edge of that, more or less the southwest edge of the pond area that essentially created that.
But it still qualifies now as a wetland.
Yes, yes, it was done many, many years ago.
This graphic here just illustrates, again, the, the wetland, the pond area, but then also the general topography of the area out here, and it does slope to the southwest at a slight grade, moving from northeast to southwest. I'm going to skip ahead a few slides here, and then I'll backtrack, some of the considerations in having the area moved from a rural designation to an urban designation, and brought into an urban growth area, there's been definite consideration given to maintaining the low-density residential character of the area, ensuring continuity and stability, and obviously consistency with future city standards, or city standards in the future. The area, if it's, if it was moved from rural to urban.
Microphone on.
It is.
Okay, well, might put a speak up just a little bit.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, in regards to having it moved from rural to urban in the future, future zoning, if it was to come into the city of Sumamish, would be at an R1 zoning, that was through consideration of ordinance dating back to 2008, and it would have a future land use designation of R1 to R4, one to four units per acre, so there would be, through a separate future process, a rezone opportunity from the base zoning of R1 up to a maximum of R4. The last thing I wanted to cover before turning it over to Lyman, to talk about the current strategies the city is taking, is in regards to access and traffic, as part of the study that's included in your packet, the city did do some preliminary traffic analysis, specifically southeast 25th Way, which could potentially connect across the top of the study area, as you see here on this particular graphic, we did take a look at what traffic volumes could look like in the future, and what you see here is, there could be an increase on 25th Way, as far out.
Compared to what's on the screen.
So, 25th Way would connect in the future potentially across here.
And, and that is, that is a potential, essentially when we did this analysis, that's essentially the worst case scenario as far as creating traffic through this particular area.
When you say we increase by 400 to 300 to 1300, what do you mean there?
Going all the way out to 2035, so what was looked at was, if this potential connection was made in the future across here, what would the impact be to not only this, 25th, southeast 25th Way, but also what would the impact be to Dothe Hill Road?
Are those increased daily trips?
Yes.
Yes, that would be, in, in 2020, we would expect daily trips to be about 400, and then 2035 would be about 1300.
How, how does that average out per, per unit? We estimate that many trips, we're talking about how many single-family houses?
Yeah, that's, that's also not just units, so within the study area itself, but that's also traffic coming from the east, and moving to the west.
Yeah, the, the number of trips from the development within that area was actually rather insignificant.
Okay, so we're talking about outside trips?
Yeah, total trips, and then conversely, there could be a future reduction on Dothe Hill Road, anywhere from 300 to 600 trips between that 2020 and 2035 timeframe.
And then the, the other thing I'll point out is that when we did this traffic count analysis, that we did not apply any traffic calming measures to those numbers, so those could be reduced further based on typical techniques, speed humps, chicanes, narrowing of roadways, et cetera.
So with that, we're going to pull up quickly here a second set of slides, and Lyman's going to speak specifically to current activities and strategy related to the study area.
Okay, essentially, we're taking three different tracks as we move through what we're, what we're trying to work, this particular issue, the variety of tracks that we have available to us, and I think this will work, okay, there we go, we're making effort in three different areas, one is, we've been successful in including, in the 2016 King County Comprehensive Plan, a scoping analysis, so it was passed on May 11th, that there is language in the scope to review the land use designations and implementing zoning, essentially to consider whether to convert this land from rural to urban, council member Lambert, along with other King County council members, including council member Dombowski, were extremely helpful in having this included in the scoping language. Secondly, another track that we're taking is that Paul Brenna, resident within the UGA area, the Dothe Hill UGA Study Area, has submitted a formal docket request to have the urban growth boundary be changed to allow the area to be considered urban rather than rural, and then lastly, that will be taking place on July 22nd, which is the day after tomorrow, the mayor and I are going to the GMPC, the Growth Management Planning Council, to ask them to include a further exemption, or a third, or fifth, I'm sorry, fourth mechanism, to allow this particular area to achieve its urban designation without a wholesale change to the, the boundary, the urban growth boundary, again, this is, again, a fairly small area, and we didn't want to, again, open the floodgates, as it were, to having a wholesale change, so in regards to that, this is the 16D that is proposed as a mechanism, essentially, we wrote it to apply just to this particular area, if the area is less than 50 acres, and is surrounded at least on three sides by urban area, and the fourth side by a natural or manmade barrier to further UGA expansion, such as an RTO roadway, so that is what we're, what we're asking the Growth Management Planning Council to look at, study, and hopefully eventually allow, or make a recommendation to King County Council to allow that, in the county CPPs, which is the countywide planning policy, and I will make it, I wanted to recognize several people that have worked on this, council member Lambert, council member Dombowski, the mayor, Tom Vance has been very helpful, put a lot of time and energy into this, as has council member Odell.
Actually, we should mention council member Jaren as well.
Okay, and council member Jaren, thank you, I apologize for my, my miss on that, additionally, we have some citizens that have been heavily involved in this, both on the, on the positive and the negative side, it's one of those areas that could potentially affect people, and they're very much involved, and we do appreciate their input into this process, and then again, staff has been very involved, Jeff, Thomas, Susan Caesar, Emily Ardishe, and Tim Larson has also helped us, so, at this particular point in time, stay tuned, we've got the King County Comprehensive Plan, staff work, we've got the King County docket request that will be processed, and then we will be visiting with the GMPC for hopefully some, an adjustment to the CPP number 16, and with that, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Council member Whitten.
We've studied this over the years, as you noted, we already put in place the zoning, so it's already taken a lot of our time and attention, it seems to be a productive thing to do, but I thought the earlier materials said we had just over 50 acres, and in which case you'd be cutting your throat to limit it to.
I believe it's just over 46 acres.
Well, that's what this is saying, but I, I, my recollection is, it was always 50 plus, slightly.
We'll, we'll double, double check our numbers, but we used several different methods to arrive at that, but we will double check that.
Thank you.
Okay, I wonder if you could maybe very briefly go over the issue of the road there, and some of the barriers that we have to fixing that road?
Well, I would, I would say that basically, we control approximately four miles, or will control approximately four miles of the roadway at the southern base of that, there's about 1,500 square feet.
Are you talking about 25th or Dothe Hill?
Dothe Hill, road.
Thank you.
The biggest constraint for further development there is the county, if we want to either maintain it or expand its capacity, the county is having financial issues in doing either.
I'm sorry, can you repeat, what issues they have?
Maintenance on that roadway, for example, plowing, the county does not plow that, and then patching, et cetera, they don't have, they don't basically maintain that particular roadway, and then if we expand capacity everywhere along that area to help our residents that live in the Trosix area, they have no money to, to help us with that, so essentially, there's about a quarter mile section there that the county owns, and we would.
And we are constrained from.
We are constrained, we'd be creating a bottleneck there, yes.
Yeah, okay, council member Valderrama, then council member.
Yeah, I know that King County comes to us regularly and asks us for assistance for snow removal and other issues that they'll request, is it possible to do an inter-local agency agreement to achieve the same thing on this road, to say, hey, we'll maintain the roads, we will be improving it, than to have to go through the annexation directly, is that an alternative that's been explored?
That could be an alternative, but again, we've got to look at our end goal on this.
We have to look at what?
Our end goal on this, if we did something like that, then the county is under, would basically not be incentivized to assist us with this, potentially, they could pay us to do it, but those folks are their citizens, and they've essentially are supposed to be responsible for them, we in turn are responsible for our citizens as well, so I would say that if we were to perform those services, we would want to be paid to, so as not to, you know, be, be providing services for people that are not citizens of Sumamish.
No, but I know that for snow removal, they have asked us to provide it for unincorporated portions in the past.
Yes, and we have, we have typically declined, unless it's heavily in our best interest, for example, Sahali Way, or southeast 43rd going down into Iziqua.
Exactly.
Essentially, it's, it's the county's responsibility to provide those services.
And the second question is, is there going to be a cost benefit analysis like we normally do for annexation areas with this, because I know that there's a number of areas discussed, or at least insinuations as to fire services and that, will we get the cost benefit analysis?
We, if we, if we get to that point, we definitely would do that, yes.
Okay.
If there's an opportunity.
If there's an opportunity, at this particular point, it is not possible to do any type of annexation on this area, because it is considered rural, and we are not able to do any annexation outside the, the urban growth boundary.
I understand, so when we get that stage, we will get the same type of analysis that we got for Kohani and the other areas, Mystic Lake, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just following on your, your talk about the condition of the road too, it is declining rapidly, there is slumping there, so at some point, the cost to repair is going to go up dramatically, and it doesn't appear the county is in a position to do that.
That, that is also my understanding.
Yeah, council member Huckabee.
If we move forward on this.
Oh, speak on the mic, yeah.
If we were to move forward on this annexation, would we own both sides of the road, or would we split the ownership of the road with the county?
We would own both sides of the road.
Both sides, okay, and is one of our end goals connecting southeast 25th, between High Country and Trosix?
No, not at this particular point, that, it would all be dependent on how that particular segment, or that section would be developed, it may serve best not to connect those two, but again, we, the worst case scenario we did on traffic analysis was connecting those two, but it may very well work out better to have the area within that, the Dothe Hill Notch, actually come south, and with improvements to Dothe Hill Road.
Come out to Dothe Hill.
That may be the best thing.
And that might be actually preferable above from the landowners' point of view.
It probably would be, also from just a connectivity standpoint, and flow, traffic flow, rather than go back into, rather than go back into High Country, and then having to work your way through High Country, just have it immediately drop down to Dothe Hill Road.
Okay, so this is similar to the Mystic Lake issue, where we're just churning up these urban growth boundary lines to meet with the roadways.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, any further questions, okay, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Let's move on to our next topic, this is the Sahali Way Open House briefing, Mr. Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have, let me move.
Okay, thank you, I've kept, we've kept their chairs warm for them, we have with us this evening to talk about the Sahali Way Open House, and give us an update on that particular project and the briefing that we heard, we have our city engineer, Andrew Zagars, along with our interim public works and parks director, Jesse Bond, and one of the things I wanted to say initially is, this particular project is coming to you you in a very, very early phase, a very early initial, we're in our initial steps on this particular project. We're looking for a long-term solution that will be coupled with a long-term need, and right now, we're essentially analyzing that need. We've not predetermined what we're going to be doing in that particular area. As you know, these types of projects take many years to do, and again, also, as part of Samamish's operating culture, we try to plan ahead. And I will point out that our ability to plan ahead and look into the future for many, many years has served us well and has helped us be successful. So that, we don't need to have preconceived notions on where we're going with this, but again, we're in our initial phases to make sure that we are prepared for the future and the future needs as it relates to concurrency needs and traffic flow. So without further ado, let me turn this over to our city engineer. Thank you, Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Acting City Manager. Like was just introduced, I'm here to present the Sahali Way Capital Improvement Project Just for a quick background, this project is included in the 20-year comp plan. It is included in the six-year TIP project list, which we recently went through, presented through council. And then it is also a required concurrency project for the 2035 study. The main, this concurrency project is maintain a level service D for the intersections along Sahali. Currently, the intersections operate between the level service B and D. The reason for the concurrency is that this segment of Sahali does fail concurrency thresholds for the average weighted daily traffic in the future by 2035. On May 5th, we were, we presented and had approved by council to hire Partite, Partite Inc. to perform engineering services for a preliminary pre-design report for this project. The scope of the report is to perform, create a pre-design report to help define what improvements to focus on, included a study to look at a three-lane or a five-lane configuration within the limits of the project. Limits went from the city limits, or were, excuse me, were included, the city limits of the project were extended to go past the city limits and to the intersection of SR 202. The original scope went from 25th over to the city limits, but the project was extended at the request of the Transportation Committee. The report is also to include recommendations for bike lanes, sidewalks, and planter strips along this stretch, and also look at recommendations for a signal aroundabout at the intersection in Northeast 25th Way. On June 24th, we did have a public meeting to present to the, to present this project to the public and have an opportunity for the public to present their questions and concerns. The meeting was held on June 24th of the Boys and Girls Club. The presentation team, or myself, Cheryl Paxton, a Deputy Public Works Director, one of our project engineers, Jed Ireland, and then from Partite, was Dan Hanson, Jesse Thompson, and Mike Hendricks. At the meeting, we had 43 participants who signed in on the sign-in sheet. We had 25 questionnaires collected at the meeting, and the meeting consisted of a project overview and public discussion on the topic. Public comments that we received, the number-one concern was the existing congestion. The, everyone acknowledged that the intersection of Highway 202 is most likely the largest governing factor of that congestion, and there was also a lot of concern in regard to the intersection at 37th. Several members, several participating members at the meeting felt that the widening to five lanes was unnecessary. Safety was another priority that was expressed. Of those items, several felt that lowering the speed limit lower than the existing 45 miles an hour was a recommendation. Sidewalk would most likely be only required on one side, and that at the, near the end of the limits and the last intersection, the only, the only draw for pedestrians would be the Evans Creek Park, and most likely, a signalized pedestrian crossing would be desired. And the last item that people were interested in was a positive response for the, looking at the 28th Place intersection, being reviewed for a signal. However, several felt that putting in a roundabout would create a little bit of a concern on the neighboring properties. The schedule we have was, obviously, today, we're presenting to council the results of our public meeting. We're going to work to complete the pre-design report for the fall of this year, where we will then present back to council. And then after those meetings, we will then, after the meeting with council, then the finalization of the report, we will then have a second public open house to present those findings and also discuss the recommendations that the council present to us for the final design. We will then look to beginning the main design of this project to begin in January 2016 and go through June of 2017, and then we're looking for an early bid around July of 2017, with construction starting in September 2017, lasting most likely through the end of 2018. And with that, I will just open up for questions.
I'll start. Lemon, you go first.
One additional item is that we would like to request as staff that this particular topic with further analysis, discussion, perhaps in more detail, be remanded to the Transportation Committee.
Yes. Yeah, I guess one, my question is, has to do with having this on the six-year TIP. I understand that there are a couple of reasons, at least two reasons for having it there. One is, actually, three, now I'm going to say four, at least three meetings, three reasons. One is just to do our planning, to have decent planning so that we can look into the future and see what's out there and make decisions based on that. But also, if we, if we are going to solve the land use issues, the right-of-way issues, and going down to 202, we do need to have it on our six-year TIP to continue that discussion. And then another one is, having it on our six-year TIP also gives us an opportunity to look for grants and other monies that are out there that might help pay for this project. And so, would you comment on those three things?
Well, actually, that is correct. To have it in the six-year, I'll express the last one, because the grants are an important factor to try to fund these projects that we have on there. Having it on the six-year TIP, yes, does make us eligible for grants and go for those applications. Having it also on the six-year TIP poses the project into an immediate concern that we can actually start looking at the design, start looking at the land use, start looking at what is required to actually construct. This project is a concurrency project, so it is a needed one for the, to maintain the level of service that we want on the, on essentially the main road we have going through the city. So that is another reason why it is actually on the six-year tip.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Valderrama, then Councilmember Huckerbe?
Yeah, I thought that was a good open house. I also attended the open house, and I think they captured a lot of the comments that were said there in the notes. What's missing from the presentation but is in the notes that a number of participants were concerned about what would be happening to the property of people who live in Sahali, that some of them were affected, and are concerned that there were not early outreach. So a lesson learned is we have to do more outreach to the citizens that live by there, making sure that they're able to participate and understand, because there's a fear now that they're going to be taking of land taking place in Sahali, and that's been voiced numerous times, and needs to get addressed. The other thing is, the balance is, I mean, we were talking about tree retention here, and there's a lot of concern about the preservations of trees in that area and what we're going to be doing. So I think we need to carefully look at that issue, and that's been called upon by a number of citizens. Third, as we talk about the Transportation Committee here, I think it's very important that we be very genuine and clear with our citizens as to what's going on on this road, because as we had mentioned before, we don't own the whole road. King County owns the road. We've raised that before on the northern section of it. So are we saying that Samamish is going to, again, work on that road? Because people are saying you can't do half a road. You either do the road or you don't do the road. If that's the case, then let's be clear and talk about it in a transparent manner. Additionally, we've talked about funding here. We need to, again, and I've mentioned this previously on the discussions, how are we going to fund this road? With the first phase of Isicua Falls City Road, there were those three articles about debt being needed. At one of our meetings recently, we showed the chart saying we can fund it with our transportation, but basically, we clean out our transportation funds if you look at that chart. So there is no money in the transportation plans if we're going to do that. So either we're going to be taking debt or not taking debt on both of these roads. Most likely, we are, but, and that's not necessarily always bad, but we need to have that discussion in a public forum. I've asked for it before. I ask for it again as we start to analyze this road, Isicua Falls City Road, that that needs to be looked at and put out. One thing that we're also going to have to address, when we talk about the congestion on 202, which is not King County, that now goes back to Wasdott, both the light of the intersection and then going on to 202. There was a concern cited, and it is in the notes, that we're moving the bottleneck. So we move this, we fix Sahali Lane Road all the way down, and then again, it's just jammed up because we don't affect 202 unless we build another flyover from the other side. So that has to be taken into account on how we're going to do it. Are we just moving the bottleneck by the time we get down and then have to deal with the state? But all of those issues need to be looked at, and I would appreciate that, one, we scheduled the discussion items on the funding of these roads, two, that we start looking in a comprehensive fashion how we're going to deal with King County and Wasdott, and be very clear about how that's going to take place, because this is a critical artery.
And don't forget the city of Redmond.
Yes, and the great city of Redmond to our north.
That is definitely part of our plan discussion.
And I think, as I mentioned before, being on the six-year TIP gives us the legitimacy to start that conversation with King County, which is obviously essential.
Yeah. Now, I put on their TIP plan six years ago that, and they put the Sahali Way road, but they put it on knowing they have absolutely not one cent to put into that road.
Well, that's an issue, and that's, that is the issue, obviously. Councilmember Huckerbe?
I have two questions, but first, a comment. First of all, the Finance Committee was asked to look at all of our future liabilities. One of the future liabilities that we are looking at are all of the roads. And in that, that analysis of future roads that are on our current tip, what we are doing is we're planning and we're looking for grant money. If some of that doesn't come about, we may not do these roads. The intent, and we looked at it, we haven't presented it to you yet, we are, would expect sufficient grant money, sufficient money coming in from mitigation sources to be able to do the projects that are on the six-year tip without any indebtedness. And I've been on this council since 1999 with a short time off, and our policy has always been, we look long-term, we plan long-term, and we don't do debt. So I don't see any particular reason to change that policy. But I do have two questions, and Councilmember Valderrama says, are we just moving the bottleneck forward? My question about Sahali Way, and I'll describe an event that occurred when I was coming home from Redmond, where the traffic started to bottleneck at the Bank America in Redmond, which is about a half-mile west of the 520 interchange. And as I slowly worked my way through, it was a two-car fender-bender accident on Sahali that backed up the traffic on 202. The bottleneck around 520 and 202 and East Lake-Samamish Parkway, the cars could not get through the intersection on 202 to turn right on East Lake-Samamish Parkway, so then they were backed up, and the traffic coming off of 520 couldn't get into that area. 520 was backed up, and it was backed all the way up into Redmond because we had a two-car fender-bender on Sahali. So I would hate to see this project go forward if we don't either have some sort of a, either a third lane for emergency purposes, or they're talking about a southbound climbing lane, something that would relieve that type of congestion. And I recognize we're working with, we're facing Wasdott, we're facing the county, they have issues, but I think we can relieve our issues and not add to the bottleneck, or we can at least relieve that type of bottleneck going forward. So can you tell me whether we're seriously looking at a climbing lane or a fourth lane?
Yes, we are. We've expressed that to our consultant, that having a climbing lane, or at the very least, you know, keeping the wide shoulders on the, going up the hill in the event of accidents or snow events in order to clear the road, allow the traffic to still maintain going up the hill. So that has been expressed to our consultant to keep in the report.
Good. I hate to be the cause of all that backup. My second question is, are we taking into account what would happen if we do or do not open the 42nd Street barricade and the impact on the intersection of 37th and Sahali?
No, this report is just really looking at the Sahali, the intersections themselves and the traffic counts, without the consideration of any of the barricades.
And why not?
Mainly because we're dealing with the existing traffic and the projections based on the numbers that are out there now. When we do a model, we base on existing numbers, existing traffic counts, and based on conditions that are out there. Opening up a barricade is a condition that really cannot be modeled right now unless we start getting some existing numbers of traffic moving back and forth. So everything we're doing now and everything we projected is really with that barricade to be in place.
I would, if we can, I would really like to see what that would look like if we removed the barricade, but I don't want you to spend thousands and thousands of dollars to do that analysis.
It would be really a rough guess for trying to look at that.
Even a rough guess would be, I would be satisfied with a rough guess.
Councilmember Jaren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew, I think the model, the model could be done. I mean, we did it on Southeast 32nd before we opened the barricade there. The question I have is, I note in here that, quote, "Some participants were concerned that a roundabout in this location would impact private property." Is that with regard to the right-of-way required to put the roundabout in?
That's correct. Roundabouts actually take up a lot more right-of-way, so it does affect the neighboring properties.
I understand that, so there are some adjacent properties that would be deleteriously affected.
Correct. And with the properties being so close to the right-of-way and how tight it is in that intersection, that was a concern of several people that are in attendance.
The other question that Romero was talking about in terms of Sahali, residents concerned about widening the road, isn't there a large enough right-of-way there to put in a third lane?
There is with the third lane, but when we start looking at bike lanes and whether we need sidewalks, and then with the topography there is along Sahali, you know, we do have some steep slopes. There would also possibly be requirements for walls, so there may be a need just to do additional right-of-way just in order to construct the amenities that we're looking at.
But what is the right-of-way?
I believe it is a 60-foot right-of-way that goes through the entire length.
Yeah, that should be adequate. Thank you.
Councilmember Witten, you have a question?
Just a quick one. Is, does the, all these plans where it's referenced show it as a three- or five-lane project?
We're looking at both. Actually, when we presented at the meeting, we just showed the existing roadway itself with the topography contours, showing the beginning and the ending limits of the project. We don't have any design showing overlays of three or five.
I understand that, but when you refer to them in the six-year tip and in the comp plan...
The six-year tip was based on a three-year, a three-lane configuration throughout the entire length. It was actually at the request of the Transportation Committee where we started looking at the, if there is actually a need for five-lane sections throughout or certain sections. So that was added to the scope of the pre-design study.
About in the comp plan?
But not in the comp plan. It's only a three-lane.
Thank you.
Anyone else for questions? Councilmember Keller?
So the suggestion was that this would be sent to the Transportation Committee just for further analysis to report back to the council as well. And it's sounding, from the conversation that I'm hearing, number one, there's some failure with this road. Obviously, we don't control it all, but having some idea about it, it sounds like the financial piece of it, working with the county and the state, I know it seems obvious, but not everybody realizes that, I guess, that we have to do that, and we have to start somewhere. It sounds like this is really a good time to start. I would emphasize something. Being on the Planning Advisory Board, on the Planning Commission, the time that I've spent, this is a major commute route for Siamamish. It is extremely important to the 30,000 residents, if we use Northeast 8, possibly as a dividing, 30,000 residents that may or may not commute off the, out of our city, that this is one of the routes that is important, not only for their daily spending time with their families, but as well, safety. If there was ever a problem up here and people had to move, we need to make sure that this road is open. So those are arguments that we can be using, Councilmember Valderrama, with the county and with the state when we go and talk to them, how important this road actually is to us. 244th is another north option. County owns the second half of it. I've ridden my motorcycle down that road, and I'm picking your mic in your hand because of the potholes on 244th. It's really surprising that the county would let it go to the state that it's in. And the only other option is East Lake Sam, and it has the same 202 connection that Sahali has. So we really have a lot of talking to do with our neighbors.
A lot of work to do, and I think this gets us a starting point. Whatever we end up doing, this gets us a starting point, and I'd hate to face all those people in traffic and say, we're just not doing anything.
Right, no, I'm glad we're doing this. This is great.
Any other further questions? All right, I guess we go to the next thing. We have Metro bus service options. Is Lyman coming back for that, or?
Actually, we do have a short, we have a short staff presentation for you.
Okay.
I actually have two presentations. One, we have a short one for ourselves, and then there were some additional slides that Councilmember Huckabee wanted to present from previous Metro meetings. Okay. Okay. So as a quick background, Metro is looking into a kind of a long-range public transportation plan for their bus services and also including the, their kind of acquisition of the Seattle or Sound Transit. This project of their study began in January 2015. Right now, they are currently holding technical committee meetings. The city, myself was president, the last one in June 23rd, where they kind of gave an overview of where they are with this project and where they're going and what their overall schedule was. The next meeting is scheduled, the next scheduled meeting is going to be on July 28th at the City of Mercer Island City Hall, in which I do plan to attend. The goal is that they're trying to accomplish is develop a preferred concept of their overall transportation plan.
Is this parallel to the task force meetings that are going on?
It is. It is correct. The technical committee meetings are more of the municipalities, more of a staff and planners, where you have then the overall other meetings that the Councilman Huckabee has been attending, which is part of the transportation committees.
Yeah, the task force is the committee that Mayor Larson is on, where they are looking at services, and it kind of feeds into this, so.
So far, their discussion topics that they, to date, have included what kind of services they want to provide or will provide, and then why. What connections are desired in the future? And are there locations that services should change? The current study, they're looking at the emphasis of three different service levels, and we'll go over there in a little bit. I think Councilman Huckabee can inform a little bit more on some maps that they presented. And then what we're looking at, the city staff is looking for direction from City Council to present at the next Technical Advisory Committee, which is going to be on July 28th, where they're looking for a little more in-depth detail of what the municipalities, you know, are looking for, for service. And then from now, I'm going to switch over to the slides that Metro has provided to the public. Now, these are going to, there are some handouts that we passed out that show a little bit more of the maps of the three different plans that they are presenting. Councilman Huckabee, would you like to go over these slides, or shall I?
Thank you very much. I'll pick it up from here. This is a coordinated timeline, and the plan that Andrew mentioned is a plan to the year 2040 with a check-in at 2025. So it's a long-range plan. The assumptions are that all of the road projects that we have at PSRC are done.
Big assumption.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, so Metro and Sound Transit are actually working together. So the plan that comes out of this will be a combined plan, and the reason we needed to bring it to you tonight is that the deadline for getting our service request in is the end of this month or at the July 28th meeting. There are many communities that don't even know about this at this point, and so it's really important that we get our information in, direct Andrew to what we would like to have, to ask Andrew at the technical meeting to be sure that we have a second opportunity to check in on this situation and to ask some other questions about the utilization of our park-and-rides and such, and I'll get into a little more detail on this. The intent is that Andrew will go to this technical meeting, tell them what our customized service levels are, and we'll talk about this in more detail. They will take the next month or so, and it's, Parametrics is doing the service plan, and they will bring that service plan back to the RTC at the September 16th meeting. So that'll be our first look at that initial long-range plan, and hopefully we'll be able to add some additional things into it. But what I wanted to show you now is if you look, if you flip your pages over, there are actually three levels of service that are being considered. So the committee had several questions about these three levels of service. The first question was, is it county-wide, and are we all stuck with the same level? And is it all-day, the same level of service? And their response was, no, we could do a customization based on our community. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight. The three levels of service are, there's a frequent level of service, which the definition is that we have all-day service every 10 or 15 minutes. It has the highest ridership, it connects the most people, and it has the lowest access to express service. So keep that in your mind as we talk about express service. Express service are the fastest travel times. So they're the express buses and their light rail from one location to another. They have the lowest access to overall service and least use to the combined network. The next one-
What does that mean, least use of the combined network?
I'll show you an example in a minute, and you'll see, it's how to get from Issaquah to Bellevue, and it looks at the three different levels of service. So the last one is local, which has the greatest access to service. They figure it has the lowest ridership, and it connects the fewest people to jobs. And the definition of connecting people to jobs is how many people can you get to a job in 30 minutes? Most of our bus riders are on the bus longer than that, so.
So that statistic isn't meaningful?
No, and you'll see one other one that's very unmeaningful. So the next page shows the service trade-offs between the frequent, express, and local. The frequent, obviously because you've got buses coming very frequently all day long, you've got the most riders going. It's got the highest proximity, but it's got longer travel times in peak than the express would. Those are the fastest travel times in peak conditions. The high ridership connects people to jobs, but it takes, well, as I said, it takes the least advantage of the network. Local is, you know, the kind of the milk run. So if you look on the next page, here we have an example of a rider wanting to get from Issaquah Transit Center to the Bellevue Transit Center. If you are looking at frequent level of service, when I say it takes, it uses the combined network, here we have an individual going to the Issaquah Transit Center, getting on a bus, having to get off a bus in Bellevue, get onto light rail, and it takes a fully 35 to 38 minutes to get from the Issaquah Transit Center to Bellevue on the frequent level. On the express, you get on the bus at the Issaquah Transit Center, and you stay on that bus, and you go directly from the Issaquah Transit Center to the Bellevue Transit Center, so it only takes you 25 minutes. And if it's a local bus, it's the same thing. You just get on the bus and you stay on the same bus for the-
But it makes more stops.
Well, it, once it leaves the Issaquah Transit Center, the next stop is the Bellevue, there are a few stops in Bellevue, but basically the express and local in this circumstance are identical. The frequent, despite the fact that it comes more often because you have to mode transfer from one to the other, you have to stand and wait. Okay?
Where would you get on the light rail to go to Bellevue?
Once the light rail comes down to, down Bellevue Way.
This is the long-term plan.
It's a long-term plan, 2040.
After all the roads are built.
So you take the bus along I-90 to?
To Bellevue Way.
To Bellevue Way, and then get on the-
Get on the light rail, yeah. Because remember, light rail's going to come Bellevue Way, and then it's, yeah.
It's going to go through the wetlands.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so there's that. So the next situation that, where the statistic is somewhat questionable, if you look at the next page where it talks about how people access transit, and if you look down on the bottom, it says during commute trips, 74% of the people in East King County access by walking or jogging. Only 23% drove and parked a car, and 2% got dropped off. However, what Metro is using is the above statistic, which is the transit access for all trips, where they're assuming that 85% of the people are walking and jogging to the park-and-ride. We all objected to that because our observation, whether it's Mercer Island or Redmond or Siamamish or Issaquah, is that is just far too high an assumption for people walking and jogging to the park-and-ride. And only 10% of the people drive a car. So if they're using that above statistic, that results in a very different level of service or consideration of park-and-rides and the need for park-and-rides. So if you look at the last page, and this is the other issue that Andrew is really going to have to address, it shows the bottom 20 utilized permanent park-and-ride lots, and we are down there at only 45%. I did bring up the fact that are they looking at these underutilized parking rides, parking rides, and determining whether they're underutilized because they dropped the bus service and moved them to the overutilized park-and-rides, which is exactly what's happened at Siamamish. They said, yes, Deputy Mayor Huckabee, we'll take that into consideration. And, you know, we go to these conferences, and we all have a specific question we're going to ask, and the answer is, yes, Deputy Mayor Huckabee, or, yes, Mayor Larson, we will, we will turn that over to the task force, and we will consider it. Thank you for bringing it up, so.
And you never hear about it again, then?
That's the question, do we ever hear about it? So we are very much at risk because the conversation is about, should they sell these park-and-rides?
Sell them.
Sell them.
They got it for free from Sound Transit.
I'm sorry, they're talking about selling them.
They should give it to us for free.
Well, whatever-
I second the motion.
You may say that, but, so our job here tonight is really to tell Andrew, what, do we want one level of service? Do we want a customized level of service? And in that decision, do we keep our park-and-ride so that we can have express service?
Earlier today, you mentioned a recommendation.
My recommendation, from my perspective of a bus rider, is that we have express service on the north end and on the south end, and that we have local transit during the day.
At a park-and-ride in the south end, any future park-and-ride with ST3 in the north end.
During commute hours, we look at express service from those park-and-rides because that will take people from that park-and-ride directly to Bellevue or to downtown in the most rapid manner. The local service includes seven-day local, which we don't have a Saturday and Sunday service at the moment at all. And I, and I think in the non-commute hours, the local service would be more beneficial. But that's only my perspective. So the reason we're here is to have a conversation about this so we can direct Andrew as to what direction, because my guess is that we may not get a second bite at the apple.
Lyman, you have a comment?
I'm looking at the page with the, excuse me. I'm looking at the page with the service trade-offs.
Yes.
And so I'm, I'm looking at the colors. It would appear that, for example, if we said we wanted express service, that 50% of the service would be express, and then 25%, and 25% would be frequent and local. Is that, no?
No, this is not for us. This is for the entire plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, so if the, if the entire plan were 5% frequent, 25%, what is that, local, and 70-some percent, excuse me, 70-some percent frequent, 25%, and then only 5% express, that this would be the service trade-offs for the entire system.
Entire system, as opposed to Siamamish.
Just Siamamish.
Okay, so we need to come up with a customized, if we want it to look like, for example, number two, we would have to tell them that.
Yes, exactly.
Or number one, or number three, whatever. Okay, and so we're looking for counsel direction at this point.
My, I guess one thought I would have is that a combination of express and local, express from the once and future park-and-rides, but a local, one of the problems we have with our park-and-rides is access on the off-hours, particularly late in the evening, so that people who might park there park in Issaquah because they can't get back to their car later in the evening. If we have a local service, we may have more of that, and so that, in fact, may actually help the park-and-ride as well as the express service. Councilmember Jaren.
Well, we do have the 554, the Sound Transit 554, which allows you to come back home up until midnight or even later, so that is an advantage.
They specifically called out the 554 as having almost zero ridership.
That's correct. That's correct, almost zero. It has to go through, it has to go back to its home base, and-
I understand that, yeah.
The argument we made was, well, it might as well go through Siamamish on its way to home base, so that those people that may end up getting hung up in Seattle can know that they can get home. So I think one thing they're not mentioning here, well, two things. First of all, where's the discussion of cost benefit? How much is Siamamish putting into the system versus what it's getting back?
Nothing.
Subsidizing, hugely subsidizing the rest of the system.
Well, so is the city of Snoqualmie, and they're getting almost no service.
Correct, that's correct.
That is not part of the conversation, this conversation, unfortunately, and I didn't say that it's the best conversation, it's what the conversation is, and where they're driving it is to this combined Metro, ST3, and then it will determine what ST3 at the ballot looks like next year.
And the other thing that isn't being discussed is Van Poole System.
I couldn't agree more.
The Van Poole Systems is the most effective in the whole nation, and yet it takes a sideline here. For Siamamish people, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense to have the frequent service, there just aren't enough riders for frequent service. So I think number one emphasis is out. We certainly proved that we, we can use the express service to downtown Seattle. The question about express service to other areas, well, obviously Metro didn't provide it, so Microsoft finally stepped up and provided the express service to Microsoft.
And Microsoft, because the Highlands Park-and-Ride is overutilized, because now many of our commuters drive there rather than getting the bus at our park-and-ride, Metro is being forced out of the Highlands Garage.
Microsoft. Microsoft is being-
Microsoft is. So, I don't know where the connector will stop.
Yeah.
They haven't found a spot.
Okay.
Councilmember Whitten?
I have a question. This is area-wide, well, beyond Samamish, and you have three possible exclusionary methods or some combination thereof.
Service methods.
Service methods, thank you. If they chose just express, do you mean they'd cut out all the local service that already exists?
Exactly. If we picked express, that's all we would get.
That's why we need a hybrid.
And if we picked just local?
That's all we would get.
We don't get the express.
Sound Transit goes away with its ST3.
Well, it would probably still be in the Highlands, you still have the Highlands Park-and-Ride, and you still have Issaquah, because you'd have Issaquah having express service, but if we picked only local, that's all we would get.
That would probably do away with our future park-and-ride.
And we would do away with our park-and-ride.
But I'm confused, because I thought Issaquah and its park-and-ride was part of this, so that if you chose the model that chose just one or the other, it would take away from Issaquah everything it has.
No, this is for Samamish, so if we chose local, we would lose our park-and-ride because we'd have no express service from Samamish, so there'd be no need for a park-and-ride.
I'm still confused.
Well, practically, I don't think they will ever dare take away our park-and-ride.
I'm sorry?
I don't think they would dare take away our park-and-ride.
I would not put a bet on it.
Dang right.
Seriously, I would not put a bet on it.
I think we have to have the express service from the park-and-rides, because, you know, frankly, we're asking for another park-and-ride in the north end of our city, whether it's in the city or along 202 or somewhere in the north. If we don't have the express service either in Samamish or from that park-and-ride, wherever it is, that's never going to happen. And, and we know that a number of our folks live beyond walking or even jogging distance from the local service, so we do need that park-and-ride, and frankly, we need more service at the park-and-ride, which is another issue. So, I kind of agree, I agree with Kathy, that a combination of express service from the park-and-ride and potential future park-and-ride plus local service is probably our best option.
Do, do we feel that we need any frequent service?
I don't think it does us much good.
Okay.
Councilman? Just want to point out real quick, at the last technical committee meeting, when they presented the three maps that are included in your packet, these were kind of a overall concept for the entire area.
Right.
And if you looked at just the, you know, city of Samamish in each of these maps, for what they're proposing for the express service, the city of Samamish would still retain their express service only that goes through the city. If they looked more at the frequent service plan for the overall system, again, the express bus service would remain in the city of Samamish, and it isn't until they look at the local service plan, and they start looking at branching out to have, you know, the local service that goes throughout, you know, that's spread out through the city. The corridors they show, are looking up, going on, you know, possible Inglewood, East Lake Samamish, Southeast Dade, and then Issaquah Pine Lake Road, and expanding, you know, expanding that with local service. But in every plan that they show, the express route still remains.
Even in the local?
Even in their local, there's a portion of it that it's still the express route stays.
They told us on Wednesday that that's not the case.
Was that, well, probably.
Yeah, so, we're getting different information, so it's, it's very confusing to me, and I think confusing to you, and confusing to everybody else that's, that's there, whether it's the mayor from Mercer Island or the mayor from Snoqualmie, it's awfully hard to pin things down.
And I think that's why we're looking to get guidance from council, so when I go to the meeting next week, I can specifically say, these are what we're requiring, and this is what we want for the city of Samamish.
Well, we have a recommendation at least to try the combination of express and local.
Okay.
Do we have some consensus that that's our best bet? Assuming we can get it?
Yeah, at least to try for that.
Do we need to specify a percentage or something?
Well, the express would, would come from the, from designated times from the-
You talked about the commute hours for express.
The commute hours, and then the local would be seven days a week.
Good.
I think with the consensus that there's no way that park-and-ride lot's going to go.
Yeah, if they do that, we will come after them with pitchforks.
Undo our vote for ST2.
We won't support ST3. We won't support ST8.
That's right. We'll actively campaign against it.
So, do we have consensus, I believe, for that? Do you know what we've got?
Council, thank you very much. I know this was thrown at you at the last moment.
It was.
And it was thrown at us at the last moment as well. So, thanks to Councilmember Huckabee for keeping her eye on the ball for this one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can we have a brief discussion about the timing of the comp plan?
I think, I think Jeff is not here, and he was going to address that issue in the morning, and during the day, and at the meeting tomorrow. So, it's a little hard for us to have that discussion without our primary-
So, I'd like to be able to anticipate, if I'm going to have to end up voting tomorrow night, final vote, then I'm going to waste a lot of time tomorrow trying to read this.
Well, ultimately, it is council prerogative on the timing. Staff does not direct that. We can encourage it, but, you know, ultimately, it is council's decision on whether or not-
I think Jeff was also going to come up with a potential motion that might address some of the issues of the council.
Very good.
And talk to Mike Kenyon about that as well.
Okay, so, if we could, let's stay tuned, and we'll get back to you in the morning on what our options are.
We're going to go home and read for two hours tonight.
Okay. Homework.
Okay, see you tomorrow night.